Like to call to order. Uh, Manchester Services Regional School District School Committee Meeting on November fourth, twenty twenty five. And like every meeting, we will start with. Any public comments? If you are joining us online, please put your name and address in the chat and we will get to you. Uh, is there any public comment in person? Okay.
I do that. We came but once we close the chat, we just have to open the chat.
Uh, looks like Nina, you have a question. If you could just, uh. Put your address in there, that'd be perfect, just for the record.
Sure, thank you.
Sorry, thank you.
That's okay. Um. Um, right. Good.
Perfect. Go ahead, Nina.
Thank you. And as always, I do appreciate everyone's time. Um, this public comment is addressing the critical issue of succession planning within the district. Superintendent Bowden is currently operating under an extended contract that concludes on June thirtieth of next year. At a meeting last year, December eleventh, twenty twenty four, I brought up the importance of succession planning and how it's essential for the district's long-term stability. During the May twentieth, twenty twenty five, school committee meeting, member Foster advocated for addressing the superintendent's contract or initiating a search for replacement. At that time, member Kate Koch-Sunkwess clarified that the process involved preliminary discussions between Chris, you and Kate, and that any discussions would have to be done ahead of time. I'm curious if this has been done. I know this subject can be sensitive. It might appear as such, but it is a normal practice. It is something that happens every day, and especially in Q four of most entities. And so there's a timing to it. Contract extensions can introduce an element of uncertainty within the district and the broader community. Given the numerous important decisions facing us, it is vital to ensure that this leadership role is filled by an individual that is going to be here for the future direction of our district. So I do hope it is thoroughly addressed. I have sat through school committee meetings in the past where I've heard contract discussions made. And it just seems that we are not looking at it, and I know that we're on a time, you know, that there's a time constraint here. Thank you.
Thank you, Nina. Anyone else online that would like to make a public comment? All right. Thank you very much. Uh, we will move on to our student reports. Maggie?
Hmm, let me see this one. Okay. Hi, everyone. Um, again, I will preface this with, it is still just me, but next Wednesday will be our first student advisory board meeting, which means we will have more input coming in, and it won't just be me, which will be wonderful. Um, okay, so the first quarter is over. Stressful little moment there with people getting projects and tests and quizzes and everything in. Um, and seniors are currently in a very busy time right now. Uh, November first was the early action deadline for college applications. Um, and they also just had their first meeting about their score projects, which will be happening in quarter four, which is very exciting for them. Um, we have some other exciting things coming up at the school level soon here. We've got, um, the musical Chicago is coming up soon, as well as Night of Stars with Spalding, which will be great. Um, and we have multiple tournament games for our sports, which is awesome. We've been advancing well, so that's great. Um, but beyond that, again, still just kind of frightened away. We're just, we're just in it. So, um, let me know if you guys have any questions, but again, next time it'll be a bigger group of opinions into this. That'll be great.
Yeah. I have a question, Maggie. Not having, I don't know if I've, if it's always been on this timeframe, or if I wasn't making attention in the past. Um, does student advisory normally take this long to get up and running during the school year?
No, so I think we had started earlier last year, but this year we had a turnover in which a teacher is like in charge of it. So now Ms. Pandara, our guidance counselor, um, is, or my guidance counselor, but also the head of the department, um, is taking over that position. And we were still lacking in, I think it was sophomores, we didn't have any sophomores who wanted to do it. So we were waiting for those roles to get filled and then scheduling. So just the way it's worked out.
Yeah, of course. How frequently will we meet now?
I want to say it's
Once a month?
Yeah, once a month.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Uh, I don't have a specific chairman's report for tonight, so we can move on to our consent agenda. And I will make a motion to accept the vouchers one zero two two through one zero two four and, uh, payroll for ten twenty three, twenty twenty five, as well as, uh, minutes from
Twenty twenty one?
From October twenty first, twenty twenty five.
So moved.
Any discussion?
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, I have some, a point that I'd like to make, which is, um, I'd like to see more details included, the minutes from the incredibly informative presentation that Ms. Collins did uh, last meeting. Um, there's, I sent Pam a few specifics around, um, the revenue from pre-K and special education program tuitions. Around the percentage of our out-of-district budget that actually goes to severe needs placements. I sent about, um, detail the current savings for the district for programs that are in district rather than out-of-district programs. And then finally, um, the fact that seventy-three students in four in district programs saves the district two million six hundred seventeen thousand and ninety dollars. I think that getting that, those types of, not all the specifics, but, but those types of specific examples into the minutes can help hit some of those points home because they're really important points and they're really big numbers. Um. So I'd like, I'd like to see that go, kind of go in, in the record.
I'll push back a little bit and say that I find our minutes to be very dense and difficult to go through. Um. I would hope that if somebody was going through the trouble of searching for that information in our minutes, that they could just find it in a presentation or report it. I understand. And I agree with you that those are important points, uh. But I also feel like we cover so many important points, especially in that meeting, that it's really hard to look and choose which data points that have been there.
If people don't know that those data points were just, were shared in the meeting, they wouldn't, from the minutes, they wouldn't know to look deeper at the presentation.
But it's the same with like our, you know, we're coming up on budget season and we're not going to be able to include every budget line in the minutes either. It's just
Right, but we can't, we can't include some.
Or you could just say, you know, some reference to say these.
Same.
Yes, some broad, a broader.
Definitely.
But at least it might spark someone's curiosity to say, oh, yeah, we have a lot of
This, is that, this, uh, presentation posted? I'm sorry.
Yeah. Maybe we made that. Is there ten pages long?
I'm adding, I'm adding, I'm suggesting two to four bullets.
I had shared with Lindsay that there's been discussion over the years about the style of minutes.
Yeah.
Uh, not even over the years, just some other something about the style of minutes that you'd like want to consider and whether or not you want to go more with summary minutes and links to the presentation page where those details are. That's for the committee to decide how they want to.
Well, that's the thing. It's like if the newsletter is based on the minutes, I'm, I'm definitely planning on including a link to the presentation in the newsletter. Obviously, as the writer of the newsletter, it's up to my discretion what to present to the committee as far as what to include. As, as the writer of the newsletter, if I'm using the minutes as the historical kind of record of the of the information, then it's, it's helpful to have it laid out in, in bare terms.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, Ben, I'm sorry.
No, you didn't interrupt me. I just, I thought this was a good discussion for the group and it should reflect the group. That's all. It's not mine.
I would rather see, because I see what you're saying. And, and I think that the newsletter is an appropriate place to highlight those key points that, for instance, that the meeting that wants to make sure gets out to the community. But I don't think that it's valuable to burden the addition more to the minutes. I've seen not just at this committee, but in other committees as well, but the difficulty of if you choose to include some details, then we're, we're, we're making that as a, as a, um, I would rather see all or not. I, I just think that picking and cherry picking things to include in the minutes uh, rather than just referencing the recording, maybe even with timestamp and for the presentation.
Yeah, I'd rather we change the process for allowing me to utilize the the, those important details without them having to be in minutes, because I think that's just leading to, um,
I'm not saying they have to be in the minutes. I'm saying we as a, I keep hearing this word cherry picking to describe like what we're attempting as far as communications and um, I don't view it as that. I view it as information sharing, um, with specific data points that are advantageous for the community to hear. So I mean, I'm happy to, for us to take a vote, and if I get voted down, that's fine. I just wanted to raise it for discussion because I think some of these finer points are impactful if we can draw them out further and get them into the dialogue.
My, my question or thought for the group to consider is when we get heavy into numbers in budget season, numbers change. And sometimes we'll report in, report a mistake, with a mistake and find a mistake that we then need to go back and correct in docking. Um, something happens, it feels like every year. If we have too many locations where numbers are stated and re-skated and not from the original source, that can, that has the potential for confusion or inaccuracy, which can bring a whole different level of question and, and rework. So just something to consider. It's not, you know, just Pam, where you had an inaccuracy with a material inaccuracy, I asked because of Lindsay, for example, what to communicate, and that against possible, right? And I referenced the presentation, so she was not, you're stating the number. It's just paraphrasing. If you do, then we still only have one place where we'll have to go back and fix. The thought would be, right, if the number was completely blanked and turned out, and right, so whether it was that, you know, so you could just The attendance, there's something in the attendance chart slash, for example. You mean, have to go back to three source documents and make sure it was all corrected because like through perception of projection. So I mean, it's just little things like that, that isn't, they're not necessarily huge material issues, but they're just the consistency, we're trying to be as consistent with the numbers. There's a lot of numbers over a long period of time and a lot of things change. So sometimes it just it's hard to keep track of all of the locations with it, so.
I do think the budget is different than this presentation. Because it's, like, these are kind of hard numbers in case studies and, yeah, so they're not, they're going to be less. They're easier to pin down, but again.
Can call a question. I don't have to believe her.
Tell me if you want to.
Who's the question?
Yeah, whatever.
If you do that, then we have to vote on that whole thing. We're just gonna have a
Whatever the next thing is, isn't the motion, isn't, oh, we're in a discussion about
So if someone wanted to amend the minutes, there would be a motion to amend the minutes to include this.
Perfect.
So that's what we're voting.
I have to leave that.
No, I should.
Now I would make on the table.
If you want to amend the previous.
So in order to move things along.
Or then we're fine, just, uh.
Okay. So in order to move things along, I'm making a motion to amend the minutes to include the specific.
So that previous motion first, I have a motion?
No, because this is an amendment to that.
Uh, did I, did I finish that?
No, no.
Uh, I amend, I may, I make a motion to amend the minutes to include uh, numbers related to revenue from special education programs. The percent of out-of-district budget going to a severe special needs placement. Uh, the savings for the district for students in probe, for in district, from in district programs, rather than paying for out-of-district programs. And the numbers for the save, the two million six hundred seventeen thousand and ninety dollars savings for the four in district programs as opposed to out-of-district programs.
Is there a second?
Also, I can put.
Better. Any discussion on amending the minutes? All right. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you.
That's nice. Did you abstain? Was that?
Did you abstain or you abstained or?
I have those.
Those, so. All right. Uh, any other discussion on the warrants, minutes? Right.
I only, I, I don't know if it's a discussion or a question. Is there a hard test rule that you can only for the communications, which I, you know, I, no minutes, once in the minutes, because I would like to say it shouldn't be like this. It should be, we're going to mark these for presentation.
I'm not under the impression that there is. I think it's up to my discretion what goes in the newsletter. I was trying to, I think my thought was just memorializing in the historical record.
The one fact. I wonder if part of that could be when there are presentations such as that one and art school improvement plans and stuff like that. If part of the communications role could be these are the, the top, you know, like this is like your, your one-page takeaway.
Yeah, key takeaway is sort of that I was looking for.
As part of the newsletter.
Yeah.
Or as it's like its own newsletter or I don't know.
Like I was, yeah, we are deviating from the point of order. We have deviated from the motion on the finisher. Yeah, fail. So, moving on.
So, all those in favor of accepting the previous motion?
Even though I voted for the other one, can I vote for this one? That it got voted down.
Yes. All right, that's enough. Thank you.
A body press.
Yeah, no, I
Okay, moving on to subcommittee reports. Uh, first off, sex elementary.
I have to report.
Facilities, sorry.
Someday you're going to give the report.
Oh, it's okay. You said.
Oh, don't worry, I wrote it all up so that I can do it effectively.
Uh, we met on the twenty-eighth of October here in the learning prom, uh, learning commons, no invoices were approved. We'll have some next time that will then approve here. Um, Brendan Zuberke, Zuberke, town administrator for Essex, joined us briefly to, um, discuss, um, EES as a shelter. Headed into the design processes, small question that came up, but he's here to just be answered in the meeting by Zoom. Um, town's comprehensive emergency plan does list EES as a primary shelter. Um, there's a, a plan in the works for a regional shelter, but, um, but the town would like to keep EES as a viable option moving forward. Official designation would require a considerable investment based on the requirements for that. Um, this is a little bit less um, formalized in that way. Um, that's not expected by the town of Essex, just need to be able to use it as is currently the case. Um, for both Essex Elementary and Athletic Memorial as well. Um, so that's been clarified and we're all set. Um, as previewed to this, uh, group before, we did have the final discussion and voted uh, to remove Apple Street from, uh, contention for all of the reasons previously discussed and shared here. Um, Doran Whittier does have sufficient documentation, uh, between the meeting minutes and conversations and the, um, consultant reports and their work um, to submit to MSBA for that, that while Apple Street might be technically viable, since enough of it's traditional, I mean, it would not be the most cost-effective solution that would meet the needs of the educational program. And so that's the, the narrative, um, that we'll go into informing MSBA. Um, also written communication to send to both towns, um, selectmen is in the works and will be forthcoming to keep them, um, updated and in, in an official way. Of the voting members present, it was unanimous. So that we are moving forward. That's, that's one thing, willow them, but thoroughly investigate. We then had a presentation on the progress, uh, of, with the ed plan and the initial space summary. So not going to take four hours to do this, but you'll lay this out because it's going to come here also.
And I'm going to follow up with that.
I know, yes, it's true. Yep, yep, I got that. Um, so space summary is a report, looks like this, looks like a ton of little lines. Um, the document, or three in this case, one for each of the three grade configurations that Pam is going to get into. That's created from a template provided by MSBA, and it does a few things. It documents the existing educational space to, to establish a baseline. Um, the categories of core academic space, special education space, art and music, public descent. Then it itemizes by the number of rooms and initial square footage calculations. The spaces that will be needed to meet the educational program being proposed to go into the building once renovated or, or rebuilt. Um, for us, the educational program isn't changing wildly. We, we have an educational program that is cross-district for elementary education. Um, this is primarily to bring the building to alignment with the cross-district program that we already have in place. Um, and make that, um, make that work in that way. And then third, it compares the proposed needs with MSBA guidelines based on, uh, what, what they will um, support kind of without question for reimbursement, and then there's some flexibility beyond that. So variation from those guidelines is potential square footage that might not be reimbursed. But it's not set in stone. Um, so we were filming a summary of the, from the memorial project, the variations, and then took an early look at areas of variation for the Essex project based on the initial space summary, which will be refined over time. Um, the discussion at the committee level mostly revolved around some of the categories, larger deviation from the MSBA guidelines and the comparison to the deviation, um, that those experienced at Memorial. This was a, an ongoing conversation, um, and, and why that might be, but the key takeaway from this was that this is an initial assessment of space. Um, it's going to be refined over time. The need for the spaces is driven by the needs of the educational program, meaning what is offered. Um, in the initial assessment, it's just all cards on the table. Here are all the possible kinds of spaces that we need. And then through the design process, the needed spaces get considered in the context of maximizing cost effectiveness. And that gets worked into the design and the whole thing is refined. So the goal for MSBA and for the SBC is always the most cost-effective solution that meets the needs of the educational program. So that's really just the key takeaway from that initial look. Um, we received the full documents for both the ed program and space summaries, um, in the last week so that we can prepare for this Thursday's meeting where the SBC will have continued discussion and ultimately vote on whether to accept both the educational program is outlined in initial space summary. And this will just mean that the SBC is confirming that the initial assessment of spaces aligns with the proposed educational program. That, that those things make sense together, knowing that refinements will take place over time. And then in a future meeting, the school committee will be asked to accept the space summary and ultimately approve the educational plan because the approval for that will come, will come here. So that's the space summary, ed plan conversation that we um, we discussed the meeting schedule coming up. SBC this Thursday, we have community meeting number two on the twentieth. Those cards and flyers to promote both community meeting number two and three, since they're kind of tight amidst the holiday season. Um, will be out very shortly. I think I see flyers there.
They're not the best.
And then finally, brief discussion on the approach to collaborating with our town partners regarding the timing of the funding vote. Um, MSBA process has us voting in the fall of twenty twenty-six for the funding um, of the project. Town of Essex might prefer, it sounds like from some conversations and comments, uh, spring of twenty twenty-seven. Time is money, but the logistics matter too, and so we just needed to discuss process. So what we decided was to start by up empowering Pam to meet with the two town administrators and start with a conversation there and then take next steps as needed. So like I said, uh, next meeting is this Thursday. What did I miss? Did I misrepresent it?
Yeah.
And I understood it. Any questions? My report?
Okay, did the policy and everything, and the conceded? Anything?
We're sorry, douchebag. That's
So, no. Correct, because of Okay, uh, the finance committee did today. Uh, we reviewed the end of year numbers and then uh, we also, uh, last week, uh, met with, uh, town uh, representatives for what we are calling that meeting.
Like it will be collaboration?
Open collaboration. Uh, so just, uh, like a brief report from that. Um, you know, there are, there are a couple of different topics. Uh, one that came up, and I think Pam will address a little bit more in her superintendent's report, is just whether or not we would like to uh, make a joint, uh, statement on chapter seventy-eight, um, and whether we want to do that you know, with the town. So that's something that we need to, to sort of discuss a bit and, you know, whether we'd like to make our own, uh, you know, put together our, our own information to send over, or if you want to do that in conjunction with towns, um. You know, I think the bottom line is that everyone was interested in doing that. Everyone recognizes that it's a challenge specifically for districts like ours. Uh, and then on, on top of that, I think really the only thing to share is that you know, uh, similar to a lot of other years, there are multiple financial constraints of both of our towns due to different things like, you know, lost federal rents. Uh, we did discuss timeframes. Uh, you know, for the budget expectations around that, uh, very high-level expectations around healthcare that we all kind of shared and the challenges around that. Uh, and I think really just the final thing to report from that is the importance for for us, uh, to be prepared with our budget in a timely manner for uh, each of the town meetings. Uh, you know, last year we were definitely pushing up against some deadlines, and that just makes it very challenging for you know, the finance committee is to prepare the budget books. So just to keep in mind that we should do everything we can to stick to our timeframes.
I can tag in and do the chapter seventy piece.
Well, uh, that would be it for the finance subcommittee report and negotiators committee to not meet. So, go ahead.
Well, this is a little bit more finance subcommittee than it, than it is
Sure.
my report, because Jake couldn't be here tonight. He asked that we communicate. Um, he had circulated a draft of the chapter seventy documents. So he went to the Masco um, town hall that they had and did some listening. He reported out what he had heard at the, uh, joint meeting last Thursday. And then there was a discussion just in general of chapter seventy, like, um, Chris had shared. So from that, he drafted the letter that he circulated to everyone today as a preview and just wanted to pose the question tonight about not not the content, not editing it, but really the scope of the letter and then the concept of whether or not we should do a joint letter with the two towns, the two towns, or do an independent letter from the school committee outlining concerns. So I think his thought is that we collect some feedback on that and then we would do another pass and we'd have another meeting before we So, um, thoughts or feedback for Jake and the finance subcommittee on crafting a chapter seventy position statement? Scope of it and, um, joint or independent? So.
Is one question on the joint versus separate. Is there value in sheer numbers? Like even if we said the same thing, there are value to having two essentially identical statements, so that they can count. Yeah, whatever, but.
I'd say that's one of the strategies under consideration. So there's an online meeting coming up. And if we it, we're considering either joining together as small groups from towns or a joint like superintendent's group so we can share cluster our minutes. But we're wrestling with that as well. Is it worth three thirty-three minute pitches exactly the same, or is it worth holding the microphone for fifteen minutes and going and that's on something. So I think that's a little bit of the strategy that's under consideration with a letter. It could be a joint letter submitted three times under three different letter kinds and
Letter kinds and committees, but with the same message to your point. So there could be both power in collaborative statement and. Three sets or four sets going in finance committee or it's a select, you have a school committee.
Go to Teresa.
So my input, my high level input on scope is, um, that I like the idea of taking. In letter format, taking a couple key points, giving some detail there. Um, but what I feel is missing from this and where I would like to include in scope is. A call to action with like three specific requests rather than not recommendation. We don't make recommendations to them, but, but. Asps, um, that are kind of embedded even in this draft, like I, I can see them there. Um, but to pull those out and end with, this is what we're asking of you. And then the only other consideration would be what's going. I think probably most school districts are. Uh, interested in a recap of chapter seventy, not all, but many, um, our regional. Aspect is, is a little bit unique, somewhat unique, and especially, you know, given that we have two towns that might not even. Read on, could be content of this, you know, probably go to that. So it might be worth. Considering that as a, as a viewpoint. And as far as the, the, whether to do it together or separate, I think to me, that's a strategy and logistics. Um, question that I'm comfortable letting people in that group work out.
Listen.
Um, I'm in favor of a joint letter. Um. I think the exercise of the, of the school committee and the two towns working together to write the letter is a worthwhile venture. If they don't come out with the same letter, simply. The act of, of attempting that is a worthwhile conversation for the three entities to have. Um, I also think. That. It is. Uh, I, I appreciate, appreciative of all of the work that went into this letter. It's very, um, comprehensive. I think I heard Pam last meeting say that anecdotal evidence and like kind of. You know, legislatures like to hear the stories or want to hear the story that tug at the heartstrings. And I didn't really, I appreciated all the specific numbers. Those need to go in there. But I think it would be helpful to inject into this letter as far as scope. Um, elements about how the towns have had to make. Hard choices because of the school budget, if not for the school budget. And I've heard a lot of this mentioned at a lot of past meetings, having attended some of them in both towns. Um, hard choices that towns have had to make. If not for the school budget, we could have done this or we could have done that. What's had, what has, have the towns had to table, what infrastructure projects are being. Kind of like a put off because we're needing to fund the schools and the schools need the, and the towns. Need the relief in terms of funding the schools. Um, what police or fire, it's like, how are the police and fire, you know, in, in, I, I would love to see. Either anecdotal or specific examples. Qualitative anecdotes of how, um. The towns are affected by this or could benefit from state aid in this way.
So they reverse well. Schools have had to.
Drink down, yeah.
To. To need that need.
That could be an element as well. Maybe that's a little separate letter. That I'd be. Yeah. And I think if that's what it feels like, well, who's going to do that? Like I, I can step up and try to. And I think what, I mean, that's the second letter.
I can speak for Jake, but I think part of what he's trying to. Approach is this is DSC now the legislative hours at this time. So is it a slightly different approach for the technical group versus that? That makes sense. I think we can dig around and find out. Um, in my conversations with the regional superintendent's group, we're looking at targeting special education primarily. But it's, um. It's a variable that raises all votes, um. Part of the struggle with chapter seventy is it's redistributive property. So. For someone to get more, it might be someone gets less unless you can fix a universal. And I think in. It's going off the top of my head and my recollection is three to four percent. Of total population is what the assumption is for special education and the formula when we know the state average is supposed to be trying. So if you fix that representation, you can fix something for every school district without.
Can you say that again? I'm sorry.
It's, is it twelve percent base range?
Essentially, chapter seventy eight is.
Let's, let's go with the line again. Let's go with, what you said.
Let's go with the general, a more objective thing. It underestimates your special education population in district and out of district. So it's, they're only re, they're only. The variable only accounts for a fraction of the population that actually exists.
Thank you.
If, if they increase that number. Whether you are revere that, you know, made out well with student opportunity app. Or Essex or Lennox, you're all, you're going to get a benefit from that. Because. A number that more accurately represents.
You're not just redistributing the existing funds.
Right. Saying I got to take from over here. So. I think we're looking for those type of. Uh, because the chapter seventy usually comes down, we're going to give more to one, who is it going to get as much? It's really about infusing new revenue.
And that's going to get worse based on the statistics that we've heard.
Right. I think healthcare is, is one that they fixed in their last iteration. They increased that percentage allocation or they increased that variable. What it is, they're keeping pace with where we are now. And they do a six year step in to get there. So anyway, I. Like I said, this is, we're iterating, this is kind of good feedback to, to take back, like, like clarifying who the audience is and, and when is the appropriate time for. Um, introducing some. Other thoughts or? I'm going to shift to. My report and I'm not going to talk at you very much because we're going to talk to you.
No, sorry, Ben. The only thing is we gets into the specifics of Essex admit. I don't know that I'm going to that. That that gets into the weeds. On us. And I think we have a stronger argument if we're. You know, unless it's illustrative iteration, you know what I mean? But it can be redrafted to highlight something that could apply to other districts as well. That would make more sense to me, but if it's really just about our particular area, just because. Issue back down.
I think that's what I was saying about the regional, like, is there other regional specific kind of takes?
So, yeah, because there is a flip side to that, you know, so in regional districts, it's like our district. So for regional districts, chapter seventy eight is different than for. School systems that are tied to one city or town, even that. You know, we get chapter seventy eight directly versus. Constantly the town or these, these alley you're seeing that day directly, so a district. So there is something to be said about, you know, for districts where there can be different. On additional districts, you know. Or whatever those reasons may be. So I think that's, you know, the flip side of. You know, potentially highlighting something like that.
The beauty of that for the regional is that you're guaranteeing chapter seventy is going toward education where. If you're in town apps, it goes into your general revenues. And if you feel like you've got a great year in chapter seventy, you may need to increase a different allocation. So. I know I have colleagues that wrestle with how chapter seventy is actually channeled to the school district. And sometimes they're peddling those up. If you have other thoughts, just send them an email to me and I will bring them, uh, send them to Jane and we'll do another.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, I'm going to jump in and what I was about to say was I'm going to try not to talk to you too much, but more ask you a couple of questions and then, um. Move us to the assessment review, which is the bulk of. Um, what we've been working on. So just a reminder, um. You'll start to see this flyer all around town posters and it'll be in your mailbox within, within a few days. That we have two upcoming, uh. Building committee meetings, one in Essex and the second one, um, coming up this, before the holiday break will be in. Um, Manchester at Memorial School on December ninth, which will be a recap of the first two meetings, but in a new location. So. Um, stay tuned for more details on that. Then I just wanted to, I was, I was going to comment on federal funding last time, but we were pressed for time. So. I just wanted to let everybody know that at this point, we have no immediate operational impact from all that is going on nationally. We don't need to get into all the details, but. Safe to say that at this point, the grants that have been allocated for this year, we're still anticipating those resources coming in. But we're hearing that the potential impact may be in FY twenty seven funding, either less funding or delayed funding. So. Something we need to keep an eye on when building the budget, but at this point, we're not aware of any, um. Stoppages in funding coming to us or any anticipated mid-year cuts, but that's probably all up in the air. So right now, status quo. Um, so one thing we're watching that will have another implication on our budget is just the national insurance picture. Um, what will that trickle down? We, we know we already have some issues that we're going to have to wrestle with this year just locally. So I think we're going to keep, we're keeping a close eye on what the national impact is on state and local, um. State and local rates, which right now we're hearing from our meeting, um. With the towns that my group is starting to say plan for twenty percent. So that, yeah, so. Plan for twenty, hopefully it goes down, but I think that's another wild card that we have coming up and we'll. We're kind of getting into budget season. We'll be talking about that a little bit more. Related to federal funding and the general uncertainty. Um, that is all around us. I just, we sent out a reminder that. You know, uh, if anybody is in need or, um, looking for some support, we, we offer breakfast and lunch, both free to all students. Um, it's available every day. You don't have to tell anybody to show up and the, and the meals are there for you. So please take advantage of that. And we also partner with Open Door, um, and you can't see it right now, but. We could, we published the upcoming November, December schedule. They come to school, but it's for the entire community. Anybody can come to any site at any time. Um, and just avail yourself of what they have to offer. So. Um, we're going to try to keep pushing this message out. Please share with people, um, that it's here for anybody who wants it.
It's tomorrow.
November nineteenth, yeah.
No, the ethical physical.
And then, yeah.
Arrows.
I was like, oh, no way. That's, so those are the main day times half days.
Mm-hmm. Memorial, I will give you more.
Have they increased, um, their mobile market? Um, presence at all here? I just saw an email from the open door saying that they were. Doing a lot more outreach, but I, I know they're doing outreach. I think we're on the same scale.
Yeah. Yes, dear. So again, just share the information. Um, then basically two general updates, but more looking for a little bit of feedback. So the middle school principal search, um. As of now, I'm planning on going forward with the, with looking for a principal. Um, for next year, Betty's doing a wonderful job for us and we love having her, but she is an interim, so we have to start planning ahead. Uh, my timeline. I, I've seen a neighboring school go out with a principal search already this year, so I am. Concerned about the pool and concerned about making sure we're ready to hit the ground running. Um, so my projected timeline is to do my, do some organizational work prior to December break and then post just after the break. Um, Tricca is just going to be leaving all of the things, it's a very busy January, so we need all of the meeting, completing meeting schedules together, but. Um, I think if we stick to this general timeline, we should have it. Wrapped up by February twenty eighth or no prior to February break that we'll need to go for a second round. Successful in finding a, a good match. Um, before we start to put this all together, I just wanted to check in with the group. Like I said, I'm planning on going forward based on where we landed last year, um. To continue with the dedicated principle, we talked a little bit about it informally at the beginning of the year. Um, but we had said we would take a look at. The model over the course of this year and can make, you know, see if it's worth exploring a middle high school. With what, a single principal of two teams. So, um. What are your thoughts on that? Are we still under the assumption that we should go forward with? A single retaining the model that we have now? Should we? Given the constraints we may be under, pursue the merged model? Um, which is kind of what are your thoughts? You know, that it's not like we have to make a decision right in this moment, but. I have said to a couple of people, I have two positions I really don't want to be in, which one is. Dragging this out until May and then trying to find somebody because I. I don't think we're going to find our long-term match that way. Um, so that would be concerning or starting a search and then. Putting a lot of time and effort and people's energy into it and then pulling the work out from under that. So. I'm looking for us to basically commit to a path by mid-December.
Uh, show more information by mid-December as far as like studying it and what we've done.
I mean, the study is. I would say that there are a couple of considerations. Can a three-person model work? Yes. It would need an additional layer of instructional support. Which we could attempt to achieve. We are attempting to achieve some growth in that through stipend reconfiguration, but we're not there yet. Um. And it would still remain. In unit. Peer supervision. It wouldn't, you know, it would not be able to help with. Full evaluation process. So you would be taking the existing staff and reducing your. Three full-time evaluator, reducing our three, three full-time evaluators. If you look at. Our district improvement plan, it's instruction focused, it's. Um, observation focused, it's consultation focused. So I think at the secondary, you would be. Limiting the amount of time that someone could realistically spend on that. It would be more efficient. It would give us some coherence between the two levels. So I mean, there's some upside to it. Um, but I think we'd have to plan to build in supports and I don't know if that gets you the big. Price tag savings that people would hope for. Um. I think those are the trade-offs. I think we're also, if we feel like we're going to be backed into a corner and have to make significant. Reductions to manage the budget, it's something we're considering because it doesn't impact by size and it doesn't impact both offerings.
They have two major concerns. I think that one is our voters. Presoundingly supported maintaining our middle school principal. Um, two is that. It may be in the short term more efficient, but I. Major concerns about the long-term costs associated with that short-term efficiency in terms of. Um, instructional. Improve instructional, um, supports and teacher evaluations, uh. Classroom management, student discipline, all of the reasons why we have four bodies doing that now. Um, I think we expose ourselves to potentially having to clean up a big mess.
I would also agree with that.
Would agree and reiterate that builders. Were really clear about supporting the middle school model. Adam, at least. Not making that change based on the dollars and cents at the end of it. And, and that if we are to do that, it is longer than a. Than a, a even what we've got left of this year look at, you know, is there really cost savings or not? Um, the unanticipated, you know, costs that, that would come with, with making that shift. I'm, I'm not opposed to looking at it in a longer term. But also in a longer term, that would give some of the administrators we currently have in place, some additional years, um, but. Under, under their belts here as well. And help us maybe grow that opportunity from, from within. So we're not so heavily dependent on the outside. Um. But I, I think that voters definitely, what I heard was, don't do this because of a cost savings measure right now. Um, and we also just are getting things underway with the schedule alignment. I mean, let's, let's let this grow so that our, it may be that our two schools grow into that model. But if we rush it, are we really serving?
If we grew the model as we were trying to, as we're sketching on paper, you're actually going to spend more money. Because you're going, you're, you're going to trade a principal leadership position and probably invest into. Um, instructional and administrative support position, something like. These are just ideas. Like a STEM coordinator and a humanities coordinator, six, twelve, who could be. In the classrooms and acting kind of in a coaching model, but also a little bit more supervisory because of the scope of the work. Yeah.
And friends, though, those are the kinds of positions that, that those who are kind of. Ego eye on our budget and really kind of on top of us making as many cuts as possible, don't understand value of.
Mm-hmm.
So if we then replace a principal, which people do generally understand the value of. With, with those two positions that people don't quite get why we need them and need to spend that money on them, we're not actually. Save anything there.
The, the one thing I would add in this is. Based on my experience as a parent of, with some, I'm, these different schools are happening, they are two. For me, very different. for me, very different age cohorts, it was different rules and I think it's important because I think the dean's role is different and I think it's important to have a principal that focuses on each set of these two cohorts and really on what are the critical needs for the students in that group? And I think the means for six to eight are very different from nine to twelve. There is a focus of a different. Um, people would be of discernment in terms of the district improvement plan on the one hand, if the vision was a dragon. I really would like us to have a long-term support and, and especially given that teams are very new.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, the three people besides the end, they're all fellows, but they're in great positions. You know, I think it would be a little bit different if we had people who have been on the, of theirs.
And I think to the point earlier about the thought of succession planning, it is much more difficult to find something. We have someone with middle high school experience right now, but replacing that position in the future due to whatever circumstance maybe, it's a little bit more, it, it constrains your pool and it's a little bit harder to find someone who can truly see and have the experience to support both age groups and the teachers of those ages and the way that they. So yeah, it could be a short-term gain and a long-term loss.
I might want to echo what everyone else is saying and just add that, you know, we've been hearing, we're receiving a report today about student achievement and we had the youth risk behavior survey last meeting or two meetings ago. And um, I think the data from that really backs up and bears out the evidence on paper that what Nadia is saying about middle school being different, um, a diff, like a very, like a unique developmental stage. And um, you know, so people in the community I heard had, had reviewed the youth risk behavior survey are concerned about the bullying numbers in middle school. Um, that's and, and those were particularly high for middle school compared to the other schools. Um, some of the student achievement data is important for middle school is, middle school does deserve a closer look. Um, and to echo your point Pam, if we want to accomplish everything that we have laid out in our district improvement plan and pursue that, then we need the infrastructure to, to do, to do it, or we should change the plan. And I like the plan, so I'm not willing to change the infrastructure.
And maybe that's the timeline is if we're going to do that, then in the next strategic plan, that's, you know, because that's the whole community process, we're taking, you do it or, or whatnot, you know, look at whether that's something to address that, but to address this every year and, and leave. And this is kind of a question that's almost a referendum on what Lindsay just said and some of what we've heard from, for feedback is, is it do we have to change our expectations? Um, I think we don't really know what we're going to be up against completely for this budget cycle. I think the money tied into this role, there's a way to, to preserve that and, and make other adjustments. Um, and I think if we commit to staying with the single principle, that's what we're saying, which is we're going to protect this in the budget. It's not going to be a discussion for cuts coming up. Um, and we might just have to find other creative ways to do it. I think that's very helpful. When picture was a, seeing as we're going in that, it seems like we're going in that direction. I'm toying with the idea of um, enlisting NASDAQ to help with recruitment. I think you can get a package from them around the five thousand or so mark where they are going to use their network to publicize and recruit um, candidates. I think we have a very solid um, hiring process that has all the stakeholders at the table and yields good results. I am very concerned about the depth of the pool, so. Um, I think I'm going to look a little bit more into that and, and see if there's any objection here that if it's not an exorbitant cost to maybe use that to, to help us extend our reach.
Is there new ways in base? So we'll get beyond just Massachusetts and not just solely rely on schools.
Given everything on the plate this year, that seems very sensible to me.
All right, we'll think it over. I'll check back in with you.
Especially if we can avoid a second round, right? If the thing is there, you're wiping the pool.
And it's funny because unsolicited, I was having a conversation today, um, with, with Keith Stefani and it's, he brought up our geographic location. We are a little isolated, so it's hard to draw, people don't naturally. I don't think we think of it because we're here all the time, but it's a little bit off the beaten path for someone, so any I think the more we can widen our region, if someone in Connecticut is thinking of relocating, might just bring some new names and bases to the to the pool. All right, well, that's exciting. Thank you for that. Um, now just a few minutes. This is very introductory. We do not have to settle this tonight because we've got probably a conversation at the next meeting. Um, and then the meeting after that and then into the end of December to try to, to resolve the configuration. You're going to get the ed plan that um, uh, Teresa referenced probably on Friday. Uh, I'm assuming that we're going to go through SBC okay, but it is long. It's going to be on the agenda for the eighteen, um, representatives from Doran, Lydia, so Christina will be here, um, and I believe Jeff and Fong will be here as well to just um, talk a little bit about the building project, some of the space summary and the admin and how they go together and just kind of walk us through. And we're going to ask for your support on that night. The ed plan is, I think Teresa did a great job. It really just outlines more so than it memorializes how we teach and how that relates to space. So I keep joking, it's like, I don't know how many, we've said that we use large group, small group. Um, you know, direct, indirect, it just kind of reiterates and lays a blueprint for the designers so that they don't go off on their own and do something that might be great for Montessori school, but physically don't work for us. So it's, it's an interesting document and it's a bit repetitive, but I think if, once you see it, it will demystify this whole. Uh, Teresa reported that we've already addressed the physical sites, so you're down to two. It's either going to be Essex Elementary. Um, the existing site or the memorial school site, which leads us to uh, grade configuration determinations. Um, did I miss one?
Or both.
Combination of both.
Or a combination of both.
So what I wanted to get a sense from you tonight is what your feeling is, because when we get to configuration, site is a component of it, but it's really about how do you want kids to be organized into learning groups within the district? And other than staying the course with the existing um, Essex Elementary School, everything else requires a redistricting vote, reconfiguration or redistricting and then a uh, but does moving fourth and fifth graders require a, it will require a regional agreement, oh my god, my brain is totally froze. And I think one of the drivers we had looked at originally was, are there operational savings? A lot of this came from discussion about operational savings. So the preview, so tonight I kind of want your initial top level feedback on this, but also share the summary tile from the appendix of the ed plan that shows you just a roll-up of potential savings or costs under each of the configurations. So we'll call the existing uh, K five with the addition of pre-K at Essex, kind of a push, it's going to, it's about the same. Um, based on today's staffing and student configuration.
Can we get any bigger?
I can try, sorry.
You know, I'm going to change that on attack. Let's go, let's go.
Okay. Um, so essentially if we looked at option one, which is the pre-K three at EES and merging the four, five to Memorial, it does require a redistricting vote. Your regional agreement guarantees K uh, K four in the school, in the town they, they live in. Um, and the regional agreement basically states that we maintain schools in each of the towns. But if we went with the pre-K three um, at Essex and the four, five, you would still need to renovate or rebuild the building. Um, potentially do some minor reconfiguration of recapture of different classrooms. Um, at Memorial because it's, it's stacked in a certain way to have uh, the youngers on the bottom because grade one and K classrooms have different requirements than four, five classrooms. So there have to be some reconfiguration, probably nothing we couldn't figure out. Um, but you would be adding transportation. Um, staffing is coming into play with the addition of a fourth pre-K teacher. And we're planning the addition of a coordinator stipend, particularly if we're both, between both buildings, but when we get to four, we did have the recommendation of the special education review that we have a more of a boots-on-the-ground coordinator. That would be a stipend, nothing, nothing major. Um, but you wouldn't really lose, you wouldn't have any staffing consolidation. And I would say it's up in the air on space and how you would structure your ACE and RISE programs because they are age cohorts. So if you were going to move RISE back as intended to Essex, you'd have the lower classroom there, but you'd have to maintain an upper classroom at Memorial, which would likely lead to some staffing growth. So I think what we see in option one is classroom staffing, no impact. Um, you could get by still with the specialist staff you have. They would be in a kind of a funky, it's like seventy-five, twenty-five split. So what I don't know, and we would really be based on year-to-year at the time, will you have enough bodies to manage the site on a given day? Is that something I know Kim is pressed on now? Um, because people are, are split between the two and you don't always have people on site. Um, so it looks like EES would cost us about two hundred and twenty-five. Additional in annual operational. That's before you look at varying expense costs or any changes in enrollment that might happen in the coming years. Option three, which is merging all of the students to Memorial. This doesn't get into the building considerations because there are significant building considerations. You're still going to need, I think they're projecting now up to like a forty thousand square foot addition. Um, and then some cafeteria and additional space there. So they're working through what happens when we're taking out walls and what does that do to MSBA reimbursements and configuration? So that's to come, but just sticking with operational. Um, you're going, we're going to need to at least to maintain a principal and an assistant principal. You're moving to a school of over five hundred students. Um, with what looks like would be two separate wings. Um, so just kind of the same concept of the discussion here, you, you need at least two people for all of the supervision and evaluation of staff. Um, you would still need the bus runs.
We wouldn't need more bus runs?
No, we need one bus regardless of company. Manage all the students.
All, all the Essex students will fit on one bus.
Isolated with the Memorial buses. We have two buses at Memorial already. We have two at Essex. So we either keep one at Essex and add one to Memorial or we move both in Essex. So it's the same. Basically, we need five buses. We have four. Either way. Regardless of the configuration.
If you're ship, if you're moving four and five over to Memorial, we need an additional bus. You need your two buses.
Right.
Plus one to come to Memorial. If they're all coming to Memorial, we still need the additional buses because of the length of time.
So, but you're using your existing buses more maybe? I mean, you're still transporting more.
Oh, we didn't come up with this. The bus company voted to us. So it's about the time on the bus, the length of the rides and the number of buses you need to transport the kids within that time. We've also added a um, late bus because.
And word. And what about transporting all of our students if they're going to Manchester as opposed to
Right.
Only our students who live more than a mile or whatever it is to wait for school.
Would this have, we haven't done any traffic impact. I'm just thinking of the line.
No, that's, that's, that's all in their design considerations. This is just the budget class every year. Because I think we're, we were looking for where the savings would be. Um, what is, yep, this.
I guess with the current population of students, there is no um, staffing consolidation that would result in savings from moving four or five to Memorial. We, we would need to pay for more staff. Same, but looking at no, we're, we're spending an extra one-ten, right?
You're spending an extra one-ten in either scenario, but you're getting a reduction from so both assumes an addition of a pre-K teacher and a coordinator stipend. But in option three, you're losing, you're reducing a nurse and a library TA.
Okay.
And some small savings of moving from a principal to an assistant principal. So you're paying for that and still recouping a hundred and thirty-five thousand in savings. Utilities, I assumed uh, twenty-five thousand square feet. They're now greater than that, so I would have to readjust that, but we would think about a hundred and, if it stays closer to the twenty-five thousand square feet, a hundred and thirteen thousand in annual utility savings. Um, based on what we're paying for Memorial expanded to the additional square feet footage. Um, and then facilities rental. So this is another, um, we assume that we're going to lose the tennis courts with the configurations that they're showing us and the need for additional parking. So it would cost us about a hundred thousand dollars to have tennis at the Mac if we don't have the courts. So that'd be a hundred and thousand annual rental fee until which time, if and until we find a new location for the tennis courts. And then they're saying two fifty to five hundred thousand dollars for replacement, but I don't know if that includes acquisition of a site or any site work that would need to be done. That's just probably laying the courts. So in all, you're going to probably save annually about thirty-two thousand eight hundred dollars until you resolve the tennis court issue. And that doesn't do anything. So the staffing, what we saw when we blended the staffing was it smoothes out some of the class sizes, but you can't drop any poor classroom teachers. And this is the sap shot of right now. It, your staffing is still going to be driven if you kind of go back to the special education presentation. Primarily, our staffing in, in general head is fairly steady and can over time decline with large declines in the population. Where we have the bounces, where we've seen them is in special education. So there might be some economies of scale if they're all in one building, but most of it is still driven by the student need, especially around um, paraprofessionals and things like that. So this is a top level in the, in the book that you're going to get, you're going to see the staffing charts behind it in the um, enrollment charts for each of the scenarios, but I think big picture, this is what you're looking at for potential costs or savings in each of the scenarios.
Just for operation.
Just for operation. Not, the ed plan will get into some of the pros and cons around um, trying to execute these models and, and where our energy and focus would likely need to go um, in trying to make them work. Other, so just looking for general initial feedback on this, on the general concept of the mergers.
Well, but, sure. Is there a different layer where we consider other roles the school plays? And we talked about the shelter and um, and still they have voting. We do not vote in school, yeah, they're voting in school. So, but is that somewhere taken into account, other uses of the school that would disappear?
Mm-hmm. In the ed plan, if you, if you get through it all the way, in different sections, it speaks to the, it tries to speak to the different um, considerations such as the loss of a community center. Um, it doesn't have a financial piece to it, but you're going, if we were to do the full merger, you won't have we're going to lose a full gym. Now, that's not a, that's not an edu, that's not educational, but it is a big part of
In it.
The community and where some of our teams play. So where are we going with them? Um, are we practicing now until ten and eleven o'clock at night or we're just practicing? You just practice less, that's an easy answer too, but there are some ripple effects. Um, what they choose to do with the building, I don't know, but we try to ed plan does try to address um, so, some of the, the community needs, but also some of the climate and culture concerns that would become a huge part of our work on a merger. Um, I think merging four and five with an existing K five school is one set of work. Eliminating a full school and merging everything into one really does put the focus on community building and climate and looking for people who are committed to doing that level of work. Didn't want to get into all of that tonight because you're going to have a good read on it before our next meeting, but any initial um, reactions?
Uh, I, I don't have an initial reaction. I wanted to add another type double advocate like argument that I've heard. And I know you have an operational chart, um, you had an operational chart up there, but um, there's also facilities, right? There's um, utility bills and um, maintenance facilities or maintenance costs, so. Um, do you have, or could you have in the future us, uh, something like this? Where like arguably one building would be cheaper to run from a facilities perspective than two.
In the opinion argument, there's the back pages to this, which shows the staffing breakdown. You would need the same amount of custodial staffing in each building because you're adding the same amount of square footage that you're losing in one to the other. And custodial has to be turned by square footage.
And presumably like also electricity and.
And that utilities.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's included in utilities.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think the utilities bill right now for Essex is a hundred and seventy-five. Something, yeah, a lot, a lot of something. And yes, this is trying to show you that those huge savings really aren't there. Everything down to um lunch staff. If you're going to serve five hundred kids, you're, you're serving five hundred kids now. It's in two locations. So you're still gonna need the same amount of people. Make the meals, serve the meals that you have right now.
What about people that would argue that memorial um has the room? Is it, is it proven that we do actually need a physical addition in order to meet the numbers? Like we're past that point. That's not a question.
That's not a question. That's gonna be in all your documentation.
Great. Or even just for grades four and five.
For grades four and five, you'd have to reconfigure the rooms that are there. So you wouldn't have to do a physical.
But we'd start running up against.
What we're gonna run up against special education spaces and displacement. And potentially splitting programs upper and lower between two schools, which could have a ripple staff impact.
There's also, I feel like there could potentially be. Long-term staffing savings because we have more flexibility with class size once as we add. Sections, right? So we've always said, oh, okay, we have twenty-seven first graders out of six elementary. You know, twenty-seven kids in one class. So now we've got thirteen, fourteen, or whatever it is. But those are all.
If we're using this year as a model, when you look at it, it, it smoothes it, but it doesn't come close to reducing the need. Um, because Essex right now it has the lower, in the fourteens or fifteens.
Yeah.
But memorial has twenties. So when you redistribute them, you still need the same number of teachers. You're just getting.
It's one of those last sizes.
And anything beyond that is just making guesses and hope.
Whether we would.
Right.
The bubbles.
Yeah. With the MSBA, I know there's some threat of. And it seems like very real to me like why the MSBA would fund an addition on a building that they just funded to be built.
And we're gonna get to that. What I was hoping today is just any initial reaction to changing grade level consideration.
Yep. Um, I think that it is important to. Um, the town of Essex. To maintain a building. In Essex. Um, I think it's very important. To keep our youngest learners in the town of Essex and. I know that when my kids were in fourth and fifth grade, I still felt like they were very young learners. It was important to me to have my neighborhood school, just like um our neighbors in Manchester had their neighborhood school. Um, and I think that even though that's a more emotional. Um, bent on it, I think that it's a very real one that we will hear again and again. In addition to the fact that there's no cost savings.
I didn't need to finish my question, which was will the MSBA fund a four or five, four or five being absorbed into. Like into memorial. Like how will that affect them?
They wouldn't be funded.
It wouldn't be a six renovation or we, we're new.
So we wouldn't get, we would get no MS. Sorry, can you go back?
Pre-K, we just assumed we're taking fourth and fifth graders from Essex and moving them to the existing building.
Okay.
So nothing is to be done to memorial other than what we might have.
And we still need a new building, you know.
Got, sorry. Yeah, so I mean, not to get, I, I, I think I have what I need tonight. I was actually kind of concerned and wondering how you felt about. Some of the social emotional impacts, the climate impacts and the community impacts. Because I'm, I'm gonna put my cards on the table. I'm not seeing a compelling financial argument in either direction. Um, from an educator perspective, I think option one. It is problematic um in terms of splitting a community and now having. Introducing fourth and fifth graders. Creating an additional trip, an additional transition for one subset of students where they have to go and make. An integration into an existing school climate and structure. And learn all new teachers and systems and then two years later make another transition into another new school. I, I think.
Yeah, the only, I think that's problematic. The only compelling argument, and I'm not even saying it's compelling in essence. Um, the one argument I would put out is I know there's been concerns that is the. Um, quality of the education substandard in Essex versus Manchester. And whether some parents might feel, wow, the far kids are now. Having the same teachers as the Manchester kids will that address that. Uh, I'm just not convinced that's the best solution, but is that something some people might sort of. It's not something I would put forward, but.
Potentially, yes.
I will say what I.
Is it appropriate for me to share initial reactions or?
Because you have to work too fast in your essential bidding.
Right. So in my school committee role, my initial reaction um with this is that the pre-K through five, through three. That the split model is a non-starter on all, on all fronts. There's no cost savings and it's more expensive. And as, as someone who's living in Essex, serving in this role and has had two kids go through that. I have heard so many times from people with kids older, all the way down to almost my, my age range of kids. That. How hard it was and how Essex kids come and they feel like outsiders. And it's an ongoing thing and the district has worked really, really hard to, to merge this call. To take a group of two, two grades of kids and put them into an established full community. You, you truly are outsiders in that role. At least at the middle school, everyone's merging together. And I, I just from, from the input that I've had of, uh, from parents and the perceived. Um. Way that kids were or weren't integrated in the past. I can't see that being of value. Certainly not in, even in comparison to the, any perceived benefit of having their kids at memorial. Um, and aside from that, the, the political. I, I don't think it will pass. I don't think it could pass to merge everyone in Manchester.
And then you'll put, we'll put it together over the coming weeks too with what they're looking at in terms of. When you look at option one, if we will have to build or rebuild or renovate, we're not getting any economy because you still need a gym. Smaller scale cafeteria, you need all of the core components. So you're still replicating core components. We just don't have.
You're saving for cost.
Okay. So any other big picture takeaways? We're gonna revisit again a couple of times over the next few months, but this.
What is requiring us to continue to revisit something that seems so not viable?
I'm just trying to understand why at some point on whether or not you will accept either of these two configurations.
Does the building committee, like who does this lie with? The building committee or us?
This slide, all lies with you.
Yes.
The building committee is generating some information.
For your. The segregation.
But I think we, we got here in part because if there's a compelling enough financial reason to really consider it, we should consider it.
Right.
That's how I understood it. Um.
So that was the driver.
That is the drive.
So.
You've seen a glimpse of operational and I'm not saying that these numbers are like. These are summary numbers based on conditions we know today. You know, so this is our answer to the operations.
I'll take a stand and say I, I don't see any reason why we should spend any more resources exploring. Options with so few cost savings, such a negative impact on students and. That's it. Are we able to um. Set a date for that vote so that we can, the public can have a chance to weigh in and then we can debate that vote?
Yeah, I, I would recommend we hear out, we go through um the ed plan. And space summaries next week. And if you want to set either the second or the sixth meeting, I think that would help the building committee.
Exactly. It might be nice if, especially since we have two community meetings coming up, so we'll be able to hear from the public in November on twentieth. Um, if we were able. We should consider whether we want to take that vote before or after the next community meeting. Because I think that that'll guide the kind of input we have.
We can put that pattern that last meeting in the seventh, eighth, ninth, sixth meeting.
Or we could take the vote on the second.
Mm-hmm.
And head into the, the recap here of everything, starting with, here's where we're going.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a strategy question.
All right. Well, thank you. I know this took a little more time. All right. I think we're ready to talk assessment.
Are we joining? Are you guys awake?
Yeah, yes.
Thank you.
So we don't have a CPAC rep tonight, so I think we're ready to jump right into. I have the same problem. I can't do it.
Are we having any like? I guess I could have asked this last week and I'm sorry. What's going on with C P A? We have not.
They have leadership. They know they can either submit a written report that will share or they have a reference.
That's mine as long as it is.
What's happening?
Yeah, we'll just, we'll start with my.
I think they have. I don't know how much their meetings.
So then moving on, we'll start our regular update and annual review of student achievement data. So thank you all for joining us today. I appreciate it. And just in a matter of time, uh, I think. I, I would like everyone to reserve power to U W M. So please take notes as you're going through. Let's listen to everything. Then we can address questions at the end of the presentation. Everyone good with that? Yep, okay, great.
That's great. Thank you. Bye everyone.
So fun to give an update and have a big team. This is so amazing. Um, so we're here to share the annual update and. Um, a lot of which are gonna really hear from us is connected to data. So this presentation, while we're gonna share some really big highlights for those who are curious. Or may be listening in at home, there's a massive appendix in this presentation that has all sorts of different ways that you can look at and explore different types of data sets. If you'd like to explore a little more or um do it in a different way. So we're gonna really hit some high level ideas here as a team. Um, and continue to share about the work that's happening already and what we have planned coming up. A little like, um, as always, we're driven by our, our vision and our strategic plan. Um, we have the district for our work. I, I have shared this visual in the past. I'm gonna let you hear the one, oh, all right, there we go. There we go. Um, sorry, I'm a little ahead of myself. So the district takeaways, I'm shifting a little. In the past, I've shared a bit about this idea of district strength and district areas for growth. Uh, but sometimes there are things that sort of cross those thresholds, or maybe it's a strength in a particular um department and maybe an area for growth in another. So. We found some really big picture themes that kept popping up. So I wanted to share those with you. Um, as we're entering into this presentation, um, as things that we're noticing and then some wonderings that we want to also be sharing with you that we're thinking about. And we're inviting you to think about with us. Um, a few of the big takeaways is that after really doing this deep and, and broad. Uh, data review, we're really finding that the priorities that we've identified in our district improvement plan and our strategic. Uh, plan priorities are very well aligned. Um, and we're actually really seeing some of those themes pop up across those strategic priorities, but also in some of the action plans. Uh, that we have set up. So we'll speak a little bit more to that. Um. As a district, we continue to see lots of areas of strength and success and growth. And we're also continuing to struggle to resolve areas of underperformance. Um, and some of these are repeated areas that we're aware of and continuing to, to monitor and take action to address. But they're there and we want to make sure that we're acknowledging that that's something that we're continuing to work on and, and taking action. Um, the, the other two pieces are some things that we, again, speaking back to those um strategic plan priorities. Those priorities of S E L and inclusive culture, those priorities two and three are showing some really positive results. Some of the data that we see connected to this, we include some really significant improvements in attendance trends across our schools and levels. Um, and also those connections to school climate and safety uh feedback from students around. Students presenting our schools as safe, engaging and inclusive. Um, and finally, a trend that we're seeing and it's a big takeaway for our district is that by the time students reach the end of their K or pre-K. Through twelve experience here, there's some real strengths that are culminating in data. So as students go through our schools, by the time they leave us and head off into the world. Um, they're showing some real strengths and there's a lot of celebrations um as we prepare our graduates for next steps. Questions that we're, we're inviting you to consider with us and that we're, that are on our mind as we're moving forward and making action plans. How are we ensuring integrity of curriculum implementation and high quality resources? And supporting professional development and training while honoring teacher expertise. Um, we know we have incredibly talented, talented educators in our district and we also know we have places where there's room for us to grow and improve. So. Finding that, that balance to make sure we're continuing to move the work forward. Um, continued focus on enhancing U D L, our universal design for learning, to make sure that instruction is effective for all learners. Um, what are we doing to expand multi-tiered systems of support? We've also heard us call it M C S S. So what does it look like to be making sure that we have strong tier one and interventions at tier two and tier three to support students across our schools and levels? And how do we better communicate to our broader community about the connections between these priorities? Um, because they are not separate items. They are inherently linked when you think of the day-to-day life and experience of our students and of our staff. So how are we communicating that in, in a really thoughtful way? And I think part of that in our attempt to communicate that broadly and see that interactive nature. I shared this just as a quick snapshot because some of these data points you've heard previously, some you're gonna hear tonight. These are in no means exclusively the data that we look at, but what I want you to see is. Shared this before, so I apologize for those who are repeating myself too. The bulk of the data we use to make decisions about kids' learning is not data that I can show you in a chart, right? It's that data that our teachers are doing every day in that formative assessment, in their classroom instruction, in their observation. In those quick hits in their classroom to make decisions about what they're doing with their students in their room and with their curriculum planning. Um, and then some of those more formative comment assessments that might be end of unit assessments or uh writing samples or maybe a quiz. Some of those, some of those assessments that allow them to make decisions again about what they're choosing to do and what kind of work with students. That's not something that we sort of have to make a graph out of, right? Cause sometimes it's uh quick and easy. It's in each individual teacher's classroom. Um, and it's not necessarily collected in that, in that systemic thing. So while we're looking at these, I do want you to know, these are the ones that sort of give us those moment in time measures. They're not necessarily telling us the full story of students. So just be mindful as well that. Because of the nature of these assessments, these two also don't necessarily tell us underlying causes or reasons for what we're seeing. So we see trends in the data, we see strengths, we see opportunities for growth, um, but it doesn't necessarily tell us why. And that's where our incredible team of instructional leaders uh spend the time in their classrooms with their teachers, in those data meetings, collaborating with each other to really. Build our understanding of this is what we're seeing, what's the input that's potentially the reason? And how do we continue to grow these strengths? How do we address these areas of growth? How do we combat these inconsistencies? So, um, just a quick snapshot to give you that big picture idea. Um, just wanted to share a little bit of who we are as we're talking about our, our M E R C student population. These numbers are from our twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year enrollment. And on the left, those are student base and ethnicity, and on the right are selected populations. Selected populations are selected by the state of Massachusetts as populations for us to continue to monitor. And this is the distribution of M E R C and percentages of students identified in each of those selected populations. I want to zoom in specifically on one called high needs because that is a term that Desi made up. Um, and they're doing it really to share a broader um scoop of students who have typically had at-risk. Performance in academic settings because schools have not necessarily met their needs continually repeatedly. So as a, as a state, we're monitoring this group. Any student who may have identified as an uh English learner or former English learner, a student with disabilities. Or a student um as, that's identified low income could fall in this high needs group. So if you, if you're identified in any one of those categories, you would be identified as a student with high needs. That being said, there might be some students who might fall in more than one of those categories. So if you go back to the previous slide, you can't just add up students with disabilities plus low incomes. I could identify. So if you go back to the previous slide, you can't just add up students with disabilities plus low incomes. I could identify in two or three of those categories. So just if the numbers don't, it numbers aren't in, it's because they're not necessarily a one for one in this presentation. I share this slide um because it is important for us to continue to remember as a district that we are serving different students than just simply ten years before. So in twenty fifteen, the enrollment of students identified as high needs in Manchester Essex Regional Schools was nineteen point three percent. We're now as of twenty four, twenty five school year at thirty point one percent. And that is three hundred and fifty eight students. So when we're talking about the students that we're serving, the classrooms and the students that are in front of us look different than very recent memory. And these students are identified as a group because we know their academic needs are different.
Three fifty eight, that's almost the size of the next. That's probably.
So just a framing preview of when we're looking at the data, the data is representative of students that we're serving in our schools, and this is a little bit of information. Few points of celebration that I do want to share, love to see these bars decreasing because these bars are representing um chronic at chronic absenteeism or absent um trends. So on the left is a graph of students across our district that are absent ten or more school days. The navy bar is twenty one, twenty two, the lightest blue bar is this past school year. So we have gone over the last four years from six hundred eighty nine students down to three hundred eighty six students, which is a significant improvement in the number of students that are absent. The middle um graph is the one that you'll hear us talk about more often, which is students who are identified as chronically absent, which means ten percent or more. That for those who are in the in the math game with me, by the end of this time of year, that is eighteen days. At this point, what would it be? I don't know.
We just went from three to four to five.
Five days would be right now. So that is students who are identified identified as ten percent or more. And that again, there is uh research that's identified that chronic absenteeism has a significant impact on students' ability to make that good progress, growth and achievement and graduate. So we can also monitor that. And then the graph on the right is students who are chronically absent for twenty percent or more of their school year. Um, this, this is a great celebration as well. Students going, the numbers going from thirty seven students down to only six. And these are inclusive, right? So if you're out for a medical leave, if you're out for a family vacation, these are encompassing all absenteeism of grades. I want to share this because those trends are awesome. And again, our peers have done a lot of great work in that, especially our dean, the most high school did a lot of work over the last few years, really making sure that they're taking that approach or reaching out to students and families, building those relationships, focusing in on that social emotional um and inclusive environment to to help students be here and stay here. Um, yeah, obviously with maybe appropriate, healthy choices so that when you're well, you're here and. Um, another piece of our our social emotional measures and our school climate measures is vocal data. So vocal is an acronym standing for views of climate and learning. Desi loves acronym. Um, this is uh actually one of the measures that's student voice. So this measure is a survey that is provided to students in grades four, five, eight and ten. And it is written after the last day of M C S on the computer. So just framing, not to discount, but to just acknowledge where we are. In this measure, you'll see the black bar is the state of Massachusetts. The red bars are our district as a whole. Those reddish orange bars are all of our, all of those grade levels across the schools together averaged. And the measures that they say is a favorable climate is something that falls between the fifty one to seventy range. And this is measured by students naming that a statement is always true or mostly true in the survey data that they're given. The data is different because each different grade, what they ask the fourth grader to talk about in their data uh looks a little different than a tenth grader. Um, and on the left is school climate, which is the aggregate. So it's saying the school climate is everything, and then it's broken up into the three buckets. Engagement includes things like cultural competency, participation, uh relationships. Safety is mental health, safety, uh physical safety, bullying. And the environment includes instructional environment, mental health environment and discipline environment. And this is all from the state. So all this is across across the state of Massachusetts in Midland. Um, pulling out just to share a few highlights and a few uh opportunities that we see um on the left are some it's really actually exciting to see some of these comments on the left because you're going to notice things like um teacher-student relationships. You're going to look at the inclusive climate of uh students and their feelings about their friends and their peers and things being fair. Um, and students' participation in uh different events, which those three buckets, if you can remember not long ago, are first round of our district improvement plan, really looking at some of those things like how are students showing their learning audiences, how are we building social emotional capacity? How are we thinking about being inclusive um and having an inclusive culture? So it's kind of great to see some of those incredible numbers, really well aligned with the work that our educators and our peers have been doing in the description. And in the area for improvement, some of these, these percentages are percentages of students that remember they mean uh always agree or mostly agree. And so we see some spaces that we have opportunity for some improvement. So we have some feelings of pressure. Um, we have the desire for student idea and input to drive some of learning in the classroom for peers to have a voice supporting their learners. Um, and students who are interested in continuing on learning with their learning tool, whether so a lot of growth opportunity there, but uh again, that if you go back to that, one of those first takeaways our strategic priorities and our district initiatives are really focused on this idea of like how would we raising up student voice? How are we making learning more authentic by building a student interest, student backgrounds? Um, how are we helping students to be more engaged in the classroom? How are we as educators shifting our instruction potentially to do so? So.
Almost if you look back to to Jake's question, when we were looking at the district improvement plan and he was like, it seemed starting at the beginning, he's not right, but he's right. It's right and wrong, I guess is what I would say. Um. This is what we accomplished in round one, and now we are at the beginning of trying to layer in round two, next step up on the stair step of of trajectory. So it it's going to cycle through a few times until we get to the harder pieces of it. So we've done some of the foundational work, but now we're moving into the ones that touch I think the classroom a little bit more. I think to Heather's point, you're going to see those, you see those in our current. So yes, we're starting all over, but at a different point. All in effect, over and over again.
Shifting gears completely, stay on this ride with me. This is iReady. iReady for those who aren't familiar is an assessment that we take three times a year. Um, you can call it a diagnostic, you can call it a screener. Um, but the intent of the iReady is that we can give a snapshot view across the district in grades kindergarten all the way up through eighth grade, and this is measuring against national norms on grade level skills. And we do it reading and we take it in math. Uh, so what you can see here is over the course of last year, our fall screening round, our winter screening round, and our spring screening round. It's a little tricky to see, I apologize, but what you might notice is there's some nuances and colors. This is actually five bands of scoring. And furthest to the left, our teachers fondly call it the stripey green, um is something that we're going to say is mid or above grade level. Um, the rain green is early on grade level. Yellow is one grade level below. Solid red is two grade levels below and stripey red is three or more grade levels below. Few things to think about when you're looking at this data, iReady is designed so they're measuring you against end of year skills expected at your grade. So in the fall, when you take the assessment, you would be expected to be one grade level below, right? Because you're starting the year, you haven't learned anything yet. So you would expect kids to be in the yellow if we're on path for where we're expecting. Which means ideally in the spring, if we're mastering that content and those skills fully at that level, we want students to be in the stripey green. So what you'll see if you look at the trends is there's great growth that we're seeing across the year for students. You're seeing that we're increasing the number of students who are in that um mastery at or above that end of year grade level. Uh, but there's definitely still some opportunity for us to grow um and improve and continue to close those yellow and those light green that we're seeing in the spring. We're not ignoring the red because clear is something we need to continue to attend to, but if you recall from Allison Collins' presentation, there are some students that these measures aren't a good measure of how they're learning and how they're progressing, but yet this measure is given to students the board. So just want to acknowledge that I would never expect to never see red or never see yellow. But we do want to continue to close and increase that amount of quote stripey green that we see by the end of this.
By the way, we speak to the pyramid.
Sure. So one of the things that we do, you typically might see uh when you're talking about MTSS or tiered levels of instruction is how many students require intervention? And it's come up quite a bit actually in recent school committee conversations that you don't want to just provide intervention for students who are struggling because never address why students are struggling, you're just going to need more and more intervention. So when you're thinking about tiers of intervention, we often look at tier one, which is everybody gets it. So the classroom teacher provides in that classroom every day, all students have access to tier one. And you would expect that need to be met um in tier in tier one instruction for about eighty percent of our students. At tier two, that small group instruction, um some really targeted skill development, closing those needs, you know, it might be flexible, it might be short term. Um, you expect that need to be um there for about fifteen percent of your students. And typically distribution for students who require tier three intervention, which is more intensive, maybe one on one or two on one. Um, a longer period of time, more frequent, longer duration is expected typically for about five percent of your students. It disrupts us interestingly, if you look at the spring numbers that if you add up the green, you're hitting eighty percent. You've got fourteen percent in the yellow and about six in that red. So that literally aligns with what you might expect to see while we continue to strive for that stripey green mastery for all students by the end. So this is the reading uh progression from over the course of last year, over the course of the three grades. The one caveat, we did not ask our eighth graders to take this final assessment. Primary reason is because with the inclusion of a new M C S of civics, the students in eighth grade are taking math M C S, E L A M C S, science M C S and civics M C S, all of which are two days. Plus, because the high school does not necessarily continue to use the iReady data in an ongoing way, it's not problematic for them to pause in their winter. Because if you if you skip one, it kind of resets to where you are. So it becomes their, it becomes a data point that they can use, but they use the winter measure instead of the spring measure for high school information. Um, so primarily for the assessment burnout of our eighth graders, they don't take it in spring, which provides a slight skewed data because it refers back to whatever they scored. So that was our reading. Um, and this is our math. Mind zooming out just a little, Kim? Um, again, which has that similar um trend by the end of that school year, but if you look from that fall, that's greatness, a real significant growth. Where students have lost their grades. In that maths. And again, that's cave. Um, along that line of of looking at achievement and growth, um we are measured by the state using accountability measures. The point of accountability is intended for the schools and districts to measure themselves against themselves. Point of accountability is are we continuing to make growth as compared to ourselves in previous years? The this accountability year, they the twenty twenty five targets, they may based on the twenty twenty four outcomes. So any any achievement that we had in twenty twenty four set our basically foundation or basement for growth for this year. Typically, it'll go over a few different years, but this year was a one year target uh development cycle. So I think, did Kim mention it earlier? Uh, our school of recognition, last year we had Essex Elementary who did great and made some incredible growth and it reset their starting point to then continue to grow. And Desi sets targets across the measures. So they're looking at achievement, they're looking at growth, they're looking at absenteeism. At the high school level, they're looking at advanced course placement, they're looking at graduation rates. So all those different measures, wherever you're at, they continue to set some growth expectations across both for all students and for those behind students. I do want to shout out our high school, which made some really great growth over this past year. Um, and was recognized by the state of Massachusetts as a school of recognition for doing a really wonderful job across measures, both achievement and growth um in some of those more specific high school measures for all students. So um, the measure itself again is really designed so that because when you compare M C S across districts, there's so many different inputs. So this is one that lets you look at yourselves. So this is the district snapshot for you, and then each school gets their own accountability measures that they measure themselves against themselves. It's going to compare to the students. Throwing a lot at you, stick with me. All right. This is a little different um data. This data is looking at M C S achievement. So one of the pieces of accountability is achievement on M C S. When we're looking at these next series of slides, I want to orient you to what we're looking at. Um, this slide is looking at M C S trends in E L A in grades three through eight. So this is across all of our schools in grades three through eight. And what this line plot is measuring is the percentage of students who met or exceeded in E L A. Great three through eight. And this is taking you on a journey from pre-COVID twenty nineteen through twenty twenty five. You notice there is no data set for twenty twenty because we did not take M C S during. This range is something that you're going to see if you play around in the appendix data set, you're going to see, I think we did some information in there. But there's been questions in the past about pre-pandemic, post-pandemic progress. So that's just a quick snapshot. But the other piece to orient you to these slides is you're going to see two lines. The dark blue line is all students, that is one hundred percent of M R S D students in that took those assessments in this district. That teal blue line is the students identified as high needs. So remember, we talked before about if you are a uh English learner, if you're low income, or if you're students with disabilities, you do fall into the category of high needs. So these are the percentages of each of those groups. Please note in the dark blue line, the students identified as high needs are included in that. Desi does not yet currently have the ability to pull out to compare students identified as high needs as students not identified as high needs. So that dark blue line, if we were really going to do a uh exclusive data set, we would have high needs and non-high needs, but I can't pull that out for you yet. I'm working with Desi. It's not there yet. Um, so I sharing this would be because we're talking about how significant that shift has been in our student population survey, and we really want to be open and transparent about where we're meeting students and where are the opportunities for growth. So this is the G L A grade three through eight trend over the last few years. This is the same grade level. This is math. So we're looking at percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations in mathematics across our district in grades three through eight. Dark blue line is all students, teal blue line is students identified as. Once again, same graph, what we're looking at here is our students in grade ten. They pull them out separately because there's a different, there are different assessments and different um trends. So I can't, I can't give you a all M R S D. So this is for students in grade ten on the E L A performance from two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty five. Dark blue, all students, teal is high needs. And finally, we're looking at grade ten for mathematics. Few other measures I want to share with you before we give you a break from listening to me. Um, our advanced force placement, so A P courses that we offer here in our district. We over, for this is last year's students, so our students who took uh A P courses and then the the correlating assessment for the A P assessment last year, we had three hundred ninety A P tests taken, which is a fantastic number. Um, what I'm actually going to, I'm going to be talking about the green. What I want to also draw your attention to is we had some students, we had twelve A P tests taken by students who were actually enrolled on their own. And of course, that was not actually taught by a teacher within our district. It was, of course, that they did virtually and then took the took the assessment. So when we're looking at our programming and our instruction, the green is a little more pure for us. So that's what I'm going to be talking about. Um, we had a hundred sixty four students take at least one test. So we had three hundred ninety tests taken by one hundred sixty four different students. Eighty six percent of those tests received a score of three or more. Three is that considered that passing that A P test? Um, six subjects had one hundred percent A P passing. And we have out of the three hundred ninety tests taken, one hundred seven tests with a perfect score of five. And up in that box in the corner, there's some data points just to celebrate um the twenty three students earned A P scholar. Twenty students earned A P scholar with honors and thirty nine students earned A P scholar with distinction. So students really not without a part with these really challenging courses and assessment at the end. And these again are nationally uh nationally. Courses and assessment at the end. And these again are nationally nationally assessed assessments that are then assessed nationally. And another one of our culminating events or activities that students can opt into is the seal of biliteracy. It's an incredible state initiative that is encouraging graduates of high school to graduate with the seal that confirms that they are literate in at least one other language beyond their their own language. So we had twenty one graduates from last year's class who were awarded the seal of biliteracy, which means they're fluent in two languages, which what an incredible, incredible skill. And of those, eight of the twenty one received the biliteracy seal with distinction. So incredible work by our world language department and by these students who really continue to strive to meet that that complex criteria. And with that, I'm going to. It's yours.
There we go. So at the high school, you kind of talked about a couple of the things I was just stole my stole my thunder.
We can reemphasize the wonderful things.
Just to share again that we were named a school of recognition by Desi for our growth and our achievement, which is a great accomplishment. And we're very proud of that. We have, there's, what we noticed in the trends was high growth for all students and students identified by Desi as the lowest performing. And we attribute that to the targeted supports and our, you know, consistent monitoring of these students. So we'll continue with with those targets, those supports, and maybe you can come up with a few new ways to support these students and monitor them. Our emphasis on the scaffolding and coaching is what I think kind of led to this increased participation. Success among our IEP and five oh four test takers. So our teachers working closely with the co-teachers in their classrooms, I think really. Led that led to the classes that lead up to AP. So the supported and co-talk classes that would then. A student could then challenge themselves by taking a higher level class. I think this contributed to that success. So in our IEP and five oh four test takers, we had thirty students. On an IEP or a five oh four, take at least one AP class. So that's. I'm pretty proud of that number. I think we're allowing students of all levels and abilities to challenge themselves and we're here to kind of support them on that, on their journey. Students that are seeking academically rigorous courses and challenges, they continue to show their high rates of participation and mastery of content. So what I was going to talk about that was our sub-students who are. Earned AP scholar and AP scholar with honors and with distinction, but it's still pretty great numbers there. MCAS, our professional collaboration and our curriculum efforts. So we're working on a lot of curriculum reviews. We're doing a lot of professional developments surrounding. Our curriculum and interdisciplinary lessons and just collaborating more as a team professionally. I believe those efforts have supported our student performance measured by our increases in exceeded expectations for both math and ELA. And increasing our meeting expectations in biology. So all of those things all around just point to. We're, we're doing a lot of the things correctly. We're doing some great things together. And I think we're continuing to. Push ourselves to and challenge ourselves to become even better. But with our strengths comes some areas of growth. So some of these areas for growth, we've kind of already talked about. So our. Students that are identified by Desi as lowest performing. Did not have the results on MCAS or the growth or achievement that we would have liked to have seen. So there, we only earned zero or one points for that in there on our accountability measures. What that says to me is that we need to, we have a deeper need for this tier one and tier two instructional support. So I've been working with Heather, working with. In our department chair meetings, but also with Heather about what can we do to identify these students and give them the. The scaffolding and support they need so that we can see some more achievement and some more growth in those lowest performing students. The data also shows challenges in our multi-step problem solving and written reasoning across content areas. So we did. We started that with the department chairs today, just looking at the breakdown of MCAS and seeing where we. Where the students are lacking and where they're doing very well, but also where they're lacking. The math department in particular has taken this on already and worked with the middle school and seeing like this is, these are the areas where we really need to. Focus on and they're working that right into their curriculum already. So they're taking that and really running with that data, which is good, which is good news, even though it's an area of growth. We're trying to strengthen that core instruction and the skill transfer, including our critical thinking and our problem solving skills. And the student voice in our vocal data indicates that lack of connection between classwork and the real world, you know, that. We, I talk about this a lot. If anyone talks to me about it, our students are very compliant and. They know what they need to do to be successful. I need to take X, Y, Z, and this is what my resume needs to look like. But they're not always seeing the value or the the connection to their real world is to why they're doing what they're doing. So we're going to provide more opportunities to kind of deepen that and connect the, connect the dots there. So more interdisciplinary work. Addressing the authenticity of work, making those connections. I think the way we we always do things, you know, we do things very well here, but with our population changing, the way we always do things is not. Serving the population we have now. And we do have a lot of things to celebrate at the high school and we're thinking a lot of things we're really proud of, but there's always ways to improve. And so we're not afraid to kind of shy away from that hard work and and get, get what needs to be done for our students to be even more successful.
There's the talking. Good evening, everybody. Basic data on the high school and to sort of echo what Heather was talking about, you can see our largest student sub at the middle school is is the high needs students. So middle school strengths I can speak to and a lot of this, of course, is the work that Joey Mano had been doing with her staff. We see that then in the spring, two thousand twenty five MCAS data shows an increase in scores for writing. Particularly in the sixth and eighth grades and high growth in student subgroups in the English language arts. So. There has been a real focus to instruction on writing in sixth grade, which is middle school academy. And in eighth grade, we are, you know, address that, I suppose, but the growth thing too, taking a look at what we can do for seventh grade and and where the gaps may be. Also, another strength is the instruction in the middle schools' individual learning and growth. The student growth percentile across for all students and for lowest performing students was either exceeded district targets in ELA. And and most of the targets in math. So that really shows that students are are. Well, we're seeing that instruction that they're starting to. To to have a result from their learning, from the growth that we're seeing there. And there also we have strong instructional alignment with the state frameworks. In particular, with our civics MCAS assessment, we do have a. A member of the staff who works with Desi in aligning and creating the curriculum for civics. So she really is a state expert on this. And our scores in civics show that she's aligned with these new standards and our students are really doing excellent in there. I think also I'd like to give a shout out to the middle school about the work they've been doing and particularly working on social emotional learning. And increasing diversity and inclusion. Vocal data shows that we think the SEL. And ruler approaches that we've been doing about school climate have been really effective. Teachers I know have enforced, been forced it in different ways throughout the school. It's a visible thing in our school as far as the chatter is concerned and the mood meter. But particularly in the exploratory area, those staff is really worked to bring those. Principles back to students in application to their schoolwork and into their behavior in the classroom. And I think the middle school deserves a lot of credit. For the work they've been doing there. Also, they met the goals of what they were trying to do for inclusive and diverse school culture last year. With increasing an inventory of diverse texts in the seventh grade and also bringing in a performance. Of the tennis in which was above the Holocaust for seventh and eighth grade. So we're continuing to brainstorm with them to how to build on that capacity as well. And as Julie said, there's some spaces, places for growth as well. We are concerned about MCAS. We were below target areas in achievement in mathematics in in all grade levels. So we've already begun to take a look at the data and I have been working both with Heather and with the math department director. Both the work that she she's doing and then reinforcing it in the team model at the middle school. So the team has already delved into an item analysis of mathematics and taking a look at where we. We have the greatest weaknesses and as far as MCAS achievement in that area. And then they are starting to brainstorm. Some short term goals that will implement this school year and create a measurement tool so that we can. Concentrate on some particular items of standards and see if we can sort of do a little mini lab to watch, see if we can build them up and improve them. In the meantime, the math department is doing something much more holistic and taking, digging a little deeper in a lot of different areas as well. The under curriculum instruction, the whole district is working on alignment. So there's curriculum work in every single department, whether it's on standards alignment or scope and sequence. The beauty of ensure all learners have access to grade level instruction. That is manifesting itself in a couple of ways where I'm starting to build professional learning communities where we take a look at. Our classroom strategies and in long-term classroom, how do we measure student success, in particular things like student voice. And in real life skills. So we're going to dig that in as sort of a study with professional learning communities in the faculty meetings. The other thing, actually, we did pretty well in attendance. We improved the attendance, but we want to build off of that. And we, we think we can pull up our, our absence rate and, you know, do more outreach to families about chronic attendance. The last year, there was a group that showed we look at the student attendance data and took a look at patterns of kids when they're absent. Or if there's a particular reason why they're absent and. And there's been a plan this year and Joe Janek deserves a lot of credit for being the person spearheading this of early outreach. Before we get to that tenth percent or that five for our first grading period, to stop talking to families and and try and work with having them come in there. So I think that ties in too with the SEL piece as well. And so where, although I, as I said, I know the attendance data did improve. We think we can pull it up some more this year as well. And I think that's it.
That's all mentions. I, I think MCAS results are a good reminder that improvement is a continuous cycle. So last year, where we were a school of recognition, our targets changed and we were definitely familiar with the effects of that. This year with the different our score, so I don't have them. I'll get into that. So I think obviously the scores for Essex are not where we want them to be yet. But I think at the same time, there are areas of strength and bright spots across content areas and at grade levels. That I just want to highlight here was the work that we've done and where we've seen some improvement. So. In math for third grade, fluency was a big piece of their focus last year, making sure that students for math facts were not only. Quick with identifying it, but also efficient in the strategies that they were using. That was a big focus, which came out of MCAS as being an improvement for them. Fourth grade had an improvement on recognizing patterns and place value. They spent a lot of their year really doing the small structured differentiated groups. To work on students with this along with some hands-on exploration on place value. And then in fifth grade, they had an increase in their database problem solving and also their multi-step problem solving. Which is supposed to show that their work in terms of just doing structure, solving routines with the class and really looking with them on. Finding ways to make it authentic and meaningful to what now that they're doing came up with a strength for them. ELA vocabulary was a big improvement for third grade. Vocabulary was a big focus for Sheila McAdams when she was here. So that was a big piece that she put into place. That's still. In line here, we have vocabulary parades that were put on. So that's a big piece that we're seeing the improvement there. Fourth grade, their, their focus last year was on sort of that point of view and. For literature and really that author's craft and author's purpose. They work on that through read alouds, reading novels. During snack time or during other periods of the day and really focusing on that higher order of thinking. And then for fifth grade, they had an improvement on their ability to use text evidence. And I want to just clarify that that's really for like the multiple choice piece because. Utilizing that text evidence didn't generalize over some of the writing that we did. So. It's taking those skills that they have in isolation and finding ways to generalize them going forward. Our vocal data is a huge strength of ours. I think if you ask anyone in the Essex community, I think they'll all say like, teachers really care about the kids there. And it's a very happy school. So students like unanimously report that the teachers care about them, they're proud of them, they're really happy to be there. So I think that. Social emotional learning and that belonging is a huge asset to the community and just a strong foundation to build upon. All right, some areas for. So for math, the constructed and open response. So. Finding ways for students to verbalize their mathematical thinking more. I think students have like the skills to complete the math, but they have a very hard time putting it into writing. It's a very complex skill to go from. Understanding sort of just the, the. The model and the number model and then transferring that into your own thinking and putting that into work. So that's an area of growth for us. Geometry, I remember even from my time at middle school, geometry was always a big piece. It tends to come later on in the year in terms of the scope and sequence. So working on finding ways to integrate geometry throughout the year, particularly in terms of the vocabulary. That tends to trip kids up quite a bit because it's a very vocab dense strand. And for numbers and operations and base ten, particularly for grades three and five. The gaps just suggest a possible inconsistent depth of instruction there around place value and multi-digit reasoning. Could be due to pacing. I know it's a focus that our math coaches working on with the grade levels now. In terms of ELA, comprehension for literature. I don't know if you remember, like, I think it was back in like twenty eighteen where there was that big push for like nonfiction comprehension. So we talked about like education and the pendulum, it always tends to swing one way and then all the way back in the other. So I think we might have swung too far. In the, in the nonfiction comprehension and we need to pull it back a little bit to more fiction comprehension with our instruction. And then also responding to reading. When, as part of the process of getting the MCAS scores, the coaches and I met with all the grade level teams that kind of looked at. We looked at the essay responses that kids had done and we were finding a lot of kids were writing a significant amount, but weren't answering the actual prompt. So there was a lot of kids just retelling the passage rather than like really seeing like, well, the prompt's not asking me to retell, it's asking me to. To talk about how the character changed from the beginning to the end of the story. So really, like you could write a wonderful structure. I kind of got that say about the completely wrong thing and get zero points. So just finding ways to make sure that the students are actually reading the prompt and understanding it and then responding to it. And using like the evidence from the text to support their answer. And so part of that goes with just the thesis and structure of increasing on like how probably scaffolding kids writing, how was it consistent and building along throughout the grades? Then attendance, our lowest performing students, last year we received four out of the four points for their attendance and that dropped down to one out of four points. So. Just goes to that, our, our lowest performing students are the ones that are absent the most. Chicken egg sort of situation. So just finding ways to engage the families earlier on in the process to make sure that all the students are are present each day when they can be. So in terms of an action plan, I'm going to skip down the bullet in terms, the most important one that I'm focusing on is actually the fourth bullet down, which is strengthening the tier one practices. You heard me talk about in the strengths. I feel like it's been a little whack a mole in terms of vocab came up as an issue. So we're gonna hyper focus on vocabulary or this other like fluency came up with math fact came up as an issue. So we're gonna hyper focus on that. So it's been a little bit of like a whack a mole situation and it's been nice in the sense that when we know that we've put our effort into it, we see the strengths that come from it. But it's a hard game. So really focusing on strengthening those tier one instructions, really looking at that universal design for learning so that we are creating lessons and units that from the beginning are geared to meet the needs of all learners rather than having to do that lesson that hits the average student and then trying to differentiate off of that. So really making sure from the get go that our instruction is meeting the needs of all of the students. Aside from that, we have increased our range of title one services. Prior years, it has been focused only on early literacy. We have changed that so it now focuses on math and reading and it goes across all grade levels. So some of those students that may not have been on our radar for MTSS because they just weren't making the cut marks on iReady are now on our radar for title one because they may have had low growth on MCAST. They may have been not meeting or partially meeting on MCAST with those students that maybe had a little bit. We are now being able to to support. The coaching cycle, this is part of our school improvement plan. The coaches have been working with grade levels on particular skills. So when we talked about the MCAST scores earlier in the year, all grade levels came up with a goal that they wanted to work on with the coaches. Ignite Reading is a department of ed tutoring for early literacy. So students are engaging in that. I'm at the early at the K through three level. And then there is also in terms of early literacy, we're engaging in some professional development through PILL for literacy with the literacy launch, which really focuses on oral reading. I talked about making sure that students are are talking and able to express what they're learning about. And then also word blending routines for reading stuffs.
Uh, so switching over to Memorial. So I think the first thing I want to say is I'm really happy and really proud of our students and our staff for how well they performed last year. So I'm gonna give a little bit of a highlight about last year, but what we realized as a as a staff this year is it's more important to look at trends over time. So if we look at individual years of data, there's always a cohort attached to that. So then you can follow the cohort, but the test changes and the bar changes from from grade to grade. So what we did was we looked at the three through five span. And I think the second thing I want to say is is thank you to to the committee and to both communities for supporting our budget. This data, so every year we do a deep, deep dive of the data. The the dive that we did into this data this year is by far the deepest and most complex. And the way that that relates back to the budget is historically when we have budget cuts as leaders, we spend the first couple of months of the school year trying to reorganize and put things into place and kind of pick up the pieces and and make things work. But we didn't have to do that this year. So this year I've been able to spend a ton of time with our coaches, coaching them, helping them coach the teachers, helping the teachers work with the coaches to do a deep dive themselves so that they own the data as opposed to more of a deep dive at the admin level and then kind of presenting it to them. So this is definitely the most comprehensive look we ever we've ever had with our student performance there. So in terms of accountability last year, Memorial was rated as substantial progress towards targets. So we were in the 80th percentile. So across the state, for every hundred schools, our accountability rating was was better than eighty of those hundred schools. Last year, some target improvement, we saw some really, really nice performance in grade three ELA, grade three math and grade four ELA. So that kind of shows us the the positive effects that our early literacy and literacy instruction is having on our students as they get to the MCAST grades. That's been a big focus over the the past few years is really focusing on building that strong foundation in the early grades so that when they get to the upper grades, they're prepared for success. Particularly or specifically in ELA. So now this is kind of, this is looking at the 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 past three years combined. So we look at the past three years combined, grades three, four and five at Memorial on MCAST performance. So language, vocabulary and reading comprehension are some of our strengths. Those are some of our hallmarks. Reading comprehension is is very complex. It's a very difficult thing to to teach because it's not just kind of a rote skill, but there's there's a thought process that has to go into it and analysis and that higher order thinking. So we've been really happy to to see that over the last few years. And then in math, so number sense and operations, both with fractions and base ten and then also algebraic thinking. Awesome strengths in math for us. And then in science, technology and engineering, there are a few kind of key areas that our students have performed well over the last few years. Those would be, so the earth placed in the universe, earth and human activity and biological evolution. So that reflects the the impact of the hands on inquiry based approach that we take in science. The interesting thing is when you look at our ELA performance over the last three years and our math performance, there's a much bigger discrepancy in our ELA data from kind of strand to strand or skill to skilled, where in math it's pretty much the same across the board. So so when I when I point out those those areas of strength in math, it's literally like it it's it's minuscule the difference between kind of the strengths and weaknesses in the different math domains, which is which is interesting. I think that really highlights our consistent implementation of the same, the the evidence based math program that we're using right now. So when I was in high school, it was probably nineteen ninety three. My soccer coach said to us after a break game, he said, the day you are satisfied with your improvement is the day you stop, sorry, the day you are satisfied with your performance is the day you stop improving. And so that's kind of a hallmark for me as a leader, for our for our staff, for our school. So we have a number of areas that although our students perform really well, there are a number of areas that we we'd like to be better. It's going to sound very similar to some of the other presentations. So the applied problem solving to solve multi step problems involve reasoning. So the constructive responses in all areas, so science, math and ELA, the constructive response questions are the ones that our kids have the have the whole sign. You know, kind of to 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 mirror the high school, our students are compliant. They are able to learn facts really well. And then it's that kind of putting it together in the higher overthinking and to echo Kim, being able to communicate their understanding. That's a really challenging thing for kids to do. And so that's something that in concert with Essex, we're going to focus on having the kids talk more about their knowledge and then write more about their knowledge in all areas. The other area also that relatively speaking, our students performed a little bit lower compared to themselves would be writing, the writing section and the S and the L say type question. So compared to multiple choice, our students did really well on multiple choice. The essay and the writing components is an area that we lost, lost some points. So in ELA, some some targeted areas, we'd like to expand opportunities for students to write. We started that a couple of years ago with some different initiatives. So we want to continue that and expand it even more. And then we want to work to refine the writing process. So the work that the coaches are doing at Memorial right now is absolutely incredible. They are working in a new model this year. They're working with every single classroom teacher in grade level groups. As I was saying before, they're diving really deep into the data and they're coming out of those meetings with one or two measurable goals. So these measurable goals are, it might be, I can give an example from the meeting today. So it was math fact fluency and also working on constructive responses. So those two things kind of go hand in hand, but they're very different skills. So the math coach worked with that grade level to come up with some strategies that she's going to model. She's going to teach them the strategy. She's going to model them. They're gonna go off for nine weeks. They're gonna do some progress monitoring. They're going to implement those new strategies. And then they're gonna loop back and they're gonna meet again. They're gonna look at the data again. They're gonna set measurable goals again. I think the thing that's been really incredible about it is every single grade level has left that meeting. Wish I could record it because every single one, they've gotten, that was amazing. And like, when can we get started? And they're so excited to try this new thing. So that's that's really, really inspiring. And same thing in math. So the work that's being done there by the coaches is incredible as well. So the first thing that we want to do in math is continue to strengthen our number sense. So that's one of the goals that I'm seeing come up consistently in in each grade level. Although by the time they get to third, fourth and fifth grade, their number sense is strong, the earlier they can have strong number sense, the earlier they'll be able to understand higher level concepts. The earlier they'll be able to talk with us, higher level concepts, the better they'll be able to write about their knowledge and their reading. So we want to kind of get that earlier. And then the second thing is just to increase students' opportunities to explain their thinking verbally and also write in. So in terms of the action plan, the coach residency model, it was something we put together over the summer, worked on early in the school year. And so that's kind of off and running now. I had it planned out until I think February, just because I was like, I'm not, I don't know if this is gonna work. And it it really has. So we're gonna extend it to the rest of the year to kind of keep having them move back. So we want to balance. So one of the things that we're really good at is teaching the basic facts, the basic skills, the early skills, but balancing that with the higher order thinking and being able to solve open ended problems and explain their thinking. So we're going to continue working on that. And then just like I said, the communication in writing of their knowledge. It's a, it's a, it's a very complex skill and we like our kids to be better. So that is Memorial.
So just recentering on some of the initial thoughts that I was asking you to think about and some of the questions that we've been exploring. You've heard some of how we're approaching some of our responses to some of these questions. Two of the pieces that really are showing trends over time is that because we're so small in as a district, there's, we see a lot of variability. I'm I'm connecting those two. I'm making an assumption. I'm making an assumption that there's high levels of variability as students move through. And it was actually referenced in a few different folks of different cohorts of students in the trends over time. And and that's important information for us to think about because if we're seeing those dramatic shifts of students move through, that's telling us a lot of information about where the students are, but but what does that tell us about our consistency of instruction and where are we getting students to? And then where are the students bringing us with that level of variability? So it's something to think about because, for example, at Essex with the size of Essex, each student is like if you have a hundred percent of your test takers, it's a kid. And so it doesn't take much percentage wise skew. So we're seeing that the student performance is varying significantly, which is giving us information about what level of impact can our instruction have and where can we make some more significant shifts so that we're seeing a more consistent pattern and trend over time? Another piece that, you know, being mindful of this, and you heard UDL, you've heard different interventions and and conversations and building that tier one consistent support. Because of the shifts in the students that we're supporting with the increased students in high needs, we might not be seeing results that we used to see. Does not mean that we're not doing what we used to do. If if anything, I think we probably are. I think the instructional routines, the curriculum use, the resources are pretty similar to what they've been for a really long time. But the students in front of us are coming in and have different needs. And so if we're doing what we've done and the students that we have in front of us aren't performing in the same way that students have, it's on us to make changes to make sure all of our students are getting access. And that's where UDL, that idea, and it was said really well by our principals, is we're planning so that all students in our room have access. And if we increase our tier one instruction for everybody, then it will make sure that all students have that chance to grow, no matter where you're entering in. A few of our whys, you heard the idea of the new civics. So yes, our student students deserve to be exceeding, you know, those, those, those performance levels that that we set. And the assessments are increasing in complexity. So just this past year was the very first year that the civics and MCAST assessment was put out. I shared this quick. It's a little hard to see because some of the text is really small, but we're asking them, the one on the left, for those who might be interested, is the question about the timeline of a town's plan to build a new school and the different actions that it takes. And then the students had to select which part of the timeline, middle school students could have been had the most direct involvement in decision making processes. So if you're curious, they are assessing that on the assessment. So students see what that means and that's connected to real life and where they're where they are. And there's some other really interesting questions about the tax problems could be a part of the case and which part of the US constitution best supports that decision. So they're really taking these complex understandings and then being asked to answer them. So there, the civics was two part. One was end of course, which looked like this. And the other was a state performance task, which asks if you look on the left here, this is like a split screen. So you'll actually see that the students have three different data sources. So they had source one, source two, source three that you follow when you click between the source. So this is source three selective. Then this says the following table shows some of the states and ask them to interpret what they see in the source with this table and answer the question using the information source three. Explain one reason it was important for the candidates to visit different states during the presidential campaign. So we we sometimes talk about MCAST as if it's like rote skills and routine, but like the level of that consuming the information and applying it to real world situations is here and and we need to make sure our students are ready for it. This one on the right is a four part question that's asking students to engage with officials of whether they have to answer these layered questions and complexity. So people have incredibly silkened mind children as a celebration or kids did quite well in this. And this is, this is the level of complexity that we are responsible for preparing for. Additionally, coming up this coming year is a new assessment in science. I'm excited about this because it's actually making the shift that's often been complained by our teachers. We need to be ready to perform on MCAST, but we want them to be able to apply in real world scenarios. And here we go. They're shifting the MCAST for science. Last year, there was field testing that happened. This year, there will be another round of field testing with a full implementation scheduled for twenty twenty seven. This happens in grades five and eight, not yet in grade ten. But on the left is like a screenshot of the scenarios of tasks and modeling. It's like it's people in a local setting, having conversations, there's dialogue, there's maps, there's different variables in each shift. And I want to show you a next of what this looks like and feels like for kids. So going through this task, students will have to then engage in different pieces, pull different things into a timeline, respond and select and interactive. Then they have to change variables in data than to answer a multi part open response question. Use those different scenarios. Yeah, this is not like mom's old app. This is like really asking our students to move towards taking this real world phenomenon. What do I know about it? How can I both show my knowledge and skills and then apply it in this now the situation while manipulating variables and in online simulations? So the bar is raised. And and it's our responsibility to make sure we're meeting students there and making sure that they're equipped both with the technology capacity, but that deep knowledge and the flexible learning to apply it. Hence our priorities, right? Being authentic in in our learning means the kids have that background. They can connect to it. It makes sense. It's real life, real world, there's some sort of audience and that there are ways that they can engage with it in a real way. We've talked about that social emotional learning, that having our students be here, feel safe, engage with each other, trust, respect their teachers and that inclusive culture that our students are including all students in our schools and in our classrooms in a way that celebrates them. Okay, did you want to speak to this piece?
I I do, but I'm not gonna read you what's on on the screen because I think you've all had the dip introduction and this is our way to try to articulate more clearly why our focus is in the areas that it's in. Because I think right now in the climate we're living in, there's a tendency to want to go backwards and to see or to explain struggles we're having now with making progress is something we used to do better back then that we're not doing now. And I think I don't believe that that's the answer. I think we show the examples of where it's going to say we need to be moving faster to get where the world is going, not going backwards to something that was tried and true. And I think that's why the emphasis is on. And I think that's why the emphasis is on taking a look at who's before us now. And trying to tease out, doing the same thing that works for someone who's very comfortable in a traditional learning format where they're being lectured to and asked to respond to a pre-test in a very drove way. Is going to continue to work for one set of kids. We have a very large set of students that we know that isn't the right recipe for. And if we want to lift all boats, we need to close that gap between those two lines. And I think we're well positioned in our district improvement plan if we can continue forward, knowing this was a, you know, three chunks in the long-term plan, that we will be in the right place to meet kids' needs and to start to see some more significant growth in the coming years. But it's a big lift for our staff too, because we were all trained in different times, so the speed at which we need them to move to keep pace, it is hard. And it's, it's a high level of expectation, but I think we can get some of that.
So some of our next steps, just broad strokes, is as you've heard come up quite a few times, we're, we're having a really concentrate focus on our curriculum instruction in that Clinton-driven manner across the district and across levels. We're really holding ourselves accountable internally to make sure that we collectively as leaders are supporting our teachers and supporting each other. Using observation feedback, walkthroughs, data and information about what instructional practices are happening. Thinking about that integrity of implementation and how do we make sure that the curriculum is, is happening in a coherent manner on behalf of our kids? And that the data cycle is moving beyond admiring data towards, you've heard it, taking actionable steps to support the students in front of us right now and making sure that we're seeing that level of effectiveness based on the shifts that the approaches. Big picture ideas of where we're now and good possible. Lots of other data, lots of other things, but thank you for helping. So I don't know how you want to handle ask the talking animals back here.
Well, you can start, I guess. So are we, you know, do you have any specific questions for anyone about?
I mean, I wrote down a few questions, but not really. I guess one thing I wanted to ask. Did the definition of high needs change between 2015 and 2016? Because that was twenty percent.
Yeah, the definition didn't change. There was a change in low income was not what it was called before. It used to be called socioeconomic.
Listen to me.
Was that, was that, was I trying to remember the third word at the song? And so some of the qualifiers for that category did change on the state level. But we're also seeing just an increase in, if you, if you sort of tried to compare those based on the data we have for identifying, there has been an increase.
And when do the kids begin learning geometry? This is some of my kids bring up all the time.
It's a really good question. Theoretically preschool, right? You're starting to talk about shapes, you're talking about ideas, you're talking about sword sorting and what's similar, what's different. I think the idea of geometry, it's like, it's just like algebra, right? Like kids start learning algebra in kindergarten, first grade, it's sort of does increase the complexity of it. The domain is often written in published curriculum as like a string unit. It happens a lot. So very traditionally, what will happen is if you're on the Massachusetts testing calendar, you wouldn't be getting tier instruction in geometry until after the assessments are over. One of the challenges is MCAS really measures two-thirds to three-quarters of a school year through.
No, yeah, that came up in the data and when they were looking at the data and they said, well, it comes after MCAS, so what do we do? And do we try to cram it in before? Do we just kind of stay with the scope and sequence? So that's something that they got the way it's.
So like for the layperson, geometry spirals through at every grade level.
Yes.
And then goes to a formal geometry process. So they do a little bit, and it's like a little bit step harder every single year than formal study.
Got it. And then just the final question. Last year's graduating, I've seen some really great qualities, it's really high achieving class. Does that like school recognition title like help when colleges are evaluating students? It doesn't really not matter so much.
When it's for acceptances, it wouldn't be something that a student would necessarily put on their resume.
I understood, but perhaps colleges are seeing this, or maybe not.
The the recruiters or the, the, the representatives that are coming to the school would say absolutely not. They would say that's it.
Just yours.
Yeah. Because it's a measurement of a great, right?
Right. It's also a state, it's only a Massachusetts one, so it's only here. It's, it's the state of Massachusetts made that, it's not.
Right, why not? Yeah, we're not being recognized as, it's, it's based on our achievement and our growth. So it's, it doesn't, I guess it's a funny term, is it?
We will just make goals.
Standing to speak to that a little bit more.
We could.
By experience, it's our cumulative success over time and our reputation. So if we send kids to oh, to Colby year after year and they're successful there, we're a good feeder for Colby. And we'll get kids into those schools. One of the questions we asked some of the representatives specifically after the rankings came out from the magazine and everyone's paying attention to that. And we specifically asked them, how much do you think about our rankings when you're renewing students? And they're, but every, the resounding answer was, we don't. We're not interested in what your school is, where your school is at, we're interested in the individual student that's applying, so.
Let's speak to that.
Yeah, I mean, it's great that we're at where we are and we, we anticipate we'll have some students getting into some phenomenal colleges again this year and going on to some, do some really great things. But the recruiters and the admissions aren't looking at where we are at, they're looking at the student.
I like that.
So thank you all very much for your in-depth reporting. It's really hard to nail down student achievement, it's like a business where you have the bottom line and you can make a profit. It's like such a nebula. I appreciate the effort to try to nail it down and the level of detail and, you know, the context of like kids growing and changing and environment always moving and test always changing. My, I, I wanted to acknowledge that, say thank you. I also wanted to mention that although we haven't mentioned strategic initiative four, which is about the budget. You have the graphic PAM of like the wheel, the, the gears all turning.
It's the cog.
The cog, it goes and it jams the whole thing up.
No, it's the grease, it's the grease that goes in the gears and smoothes everything over and makes them turn. And so I think as a committee, like that falls on us, right? That's our, that's what we can contribute. I did have a question, a couple, I'll try to keep it to two questions. One is for math, I'm curious about the continuity and curriculum from the elementary school to the middle school. I know I worked hard to relearn math to help my son in memorial with everyday math and then face tens, very like impressive and revolutionary way of teaching math. Is that continued through middle school? Does that curriculum stop at grade five? What then gets picked up? Has that transition been studied at all?
Yes. I will supplement for the more about. Currently, the use of the everyday math tool is a kindergarten through fifth grade resource. This, the question of studied is, is really well timed. The, this year are beginning to launch a curriculum review process for pre-K through 12th in mathematics. That's quite literally what it is. Yeah, it's, it's quite literally starts with that self-study. What do we have, what resources can we utilize, what's in place, what is our data telling us? Choose your achievement, you know, for me to go, all that good stuff. So we are in that spot right now of the inventory of what curricular resources and tools are people using where? And what does that look like as we're thinking vertically and accordingly?
Awesome, yeah, so the curriculum we will kind of look at at that in the next greater. And then I'm curious about just MCAS in general. Obviously, there are not a graduation requirement, yet they're still being developed by the state and, and for like a, for the key, they're incredible now, I like, I actually love these questions. They're going to be, continue to evolve and be administered by the state. They're, and used to assess schools, but not, even though they're not a graduation.
There's still state law that requires that we, we complete the state assessments, that is still required. They are no longer a requirement for graduation for high school students. But we are required as a district to give them, students are required to take them. And they are going to be used for things like our accountability, including participation in, in MCAS, that's a piece. And then there's other places that the high school MCAS is still utilized, like it is an entry into SEAL by Literacy. You have to receive certain scores and then be eligible for SEAL by Literacy or state-level scholarships. But yes, that, that graduation piece is not there, but there is still a state requirement that we do provide that.
Okay, so thank you.
Very well.
Second one's in. Very impressive, there was nothing to do here in the middle of detail. Couple of questions, one follow-up on high needs. Because it seems to cover lots of different categories. Do you have data that breaks it up the same way or I don't see more increase in one category versus another than I had at some schools may be high needs for a lot of things?
Yeah, did you want?
But should we have? Next, that though, is that's fine, I'm sorry if I missed it.
No, no, don't get me worried.
At the end of, in the appendix.
There is.
Well, if you want me to tell you which page I'll be going through.
Um, I don't have the slide numbers memorized. I should, there's a good amount of time is spent. So here, this is, and you know, to be honest with you.
Do you know off the top of your head, was there a particular category that?
Primarily low income has been the most significant increase in that ten-year span of time that's contributing population in high needs.
And then the type of it and this relates to something you said, and I guess it resonates with me. Graveling in my professional life. And that is I will be proactive as opposed to reactive. And I think that you're, and you mentioned also, right? That if you're always just looking at, okay, what's the issue this year? And can we design a solution for the issue identified this year as opposed to what's our long-term strategy? Do you declare things we want? So in this prompt, um, as much as possible moving away, stop solving the immediate problem. Looking more for the longer term. And so that's why I was more interested in seeing that short issues over time as opposed to where are we this year versus last year? Because I mean, I miss the big future, right? I did know like there's some performance areas where it seems like we're getting closer to the 2019 level. But the fact that that's true doesn't tell me necessarily why. Right, like I could come up with my own theories, but I may be involved in it. So I think again, if you can look more, focus on longer term, and what makes sense to you, like based on, like, you know, those of you who have been in missions for a while. What are you seeing? And then I think to Pam's point. We have to prepare our students for the future. Right, should be trying to solve on the past. And something I keep telling my own kids is, look, there may be jobs out there, but don't suspect. Right, so what are the skills that I think will best equip you to be resilient in what may? There's a lot of uncertainty around the reality. As much as possible, the type of thinking skills. So we have to be clear, you know, having you digest information, think about it critically, be able to talk about what is effective. Those skills that are just being able to move. Um, I think hope and right, that that's a skill that will be important, right? And being able to detect biases. Right, and, and not necessarily believe that person you read, that's that conversation I have often with my middle school. Just because it's on TikTok doesn't do it straight. So that's my feedback, it's been a week, but the question you did really get that.
It's down around page fifty-three. Page fifty-three or slide fifty-three? Because the PDF is two sides. Yes. Late night. I, I want to highlight something that Heather, I'm sure you've said it, but I, I may have just sort of glossed over it. And, but I know it was written in here somewhere. That especially with the MCAS, the data are showing that those early issues smoothed out. Our 10th grade MCAS data have all students, including I, so all students above eighty percent in Math and Lit. So something's going right in this whole process here. And I just think that's really important to highlight, which leads my question. As I spent time going through all of this and then also listening to how you explain it, the thing I keep coming back to is one of the, the kind of guiding questions for us about how do we balance, you know, improving your own instruction and all these things and honoring teacher expertise? And this is a good question for our district. And I would love for it to be to have it on. But we have an awful lot of really good stuff coming out of the output here. And when I, you know, go through this, the SEAL by Literacy, all the AP kudos, the MCAS, kudos, the school recognition, kudos, and all of these other things. And even not talking about high school seniors graduating, going on to, to rate colleges, but doing the things, whatever it is that they want to do next. If that's what, that, that the door is open for them to go on whatever journey they need to go on. So and at the same, at the same time, we've got increasing high needs students, but we also have this like medium need students, rather than standard needs, like 504, kids with 504 plans are included in that, right? Because they're not special elimination. I have to guess that those numbers have increased over the years as well, and we just might not factor them the same way. So all of this is on the teachers. Yes, all of this is on the teachers. And we have some really incredible output. The thing that's weighing on is how do we, how are we recognizing and rewarding? And from a what Lindsay said, you know, advocate for the budget, advocate for consistency and stability, right? So that you're not starting from square one or square negative one every year. But I just kind of like the whack-a-mole, instead of just being reactive and, and we have to bring teachers along and help them get excited about, about meeting the needs of the learners in front of them now. How are we also helping those who are doing and engaging? Make it feel really valuable and recognized. It's not pizza party Friday, it's like, I don't, I don't, and I don't have the answer. But that's the thing that weighs on me throughout this is, you know, it's not like their job gets easier every time of something. It's probably going to be different every summer. So I don't have an answer, but that's the question that I'm sort of left with. And, and I'm, I'm glad to hear about things like including all teachers or as many as want to be involved in the data. That's where we can see it, right? There's anything we can do beyond the budget to be willing? Please help us know because the burnt-out factory is probably you. That's my main takeaway, thanks. I have a suggestion. I, I think it's how we talk about the problem of solving more so than anything else. And if we see it as an area of growth and development and realize that it might be a difficult lift. Or a harder change, and it's not a simple flip of the switch or a do this differently and now it's all fit. I think how we approach as a team together, creating a support system for the change. So it doesn't always feel like punitive piece.
Yeah.
And, and so that's how we talk about the problem, I think it is, it's great. So you can be thinking about here at this table too, the language we use, the way we address in reactionary, proactive versus reaction. Because I think one struggle, whether you're on the committee or you're a teacher in the classroom, or you're the leader of the building, and I think the leaders of the building sometimes see it the most. Is that in such an individualized society, everybody wants that student achievement number to be what they need it to be. So if you're the parent of a kid who struggles and they never be in that being an exceeding category, but maybe get to make it three notches above where they were, that's success.
Yes.
But that's not success if your kid's already starting at the top. So I think sometimes we're not only playing whack-a-mole with how to react to debt down and forth. We're playing whack-a-mole with coming up with system solutions to an individualized society. So at some point, there has to be there is going to be, it, it cannot be, we aren't ever going to be or have the
There is going to be, it it cannot be, we aren't ever going to be or have the resources to be completely individualized. Every family in every moment. So I think just realizing that sometimes and helping us cope with that would be, is a big help. It's a big help. Cause I said to somebody today, we don't usually get a lineup at the door for things that are going really well and meeting the needs of kids. Um, we have wonderful people that do step up and and give give us some positive feedback in town. But typically, if it leans on anyone, yes, at the end, they're solving a problem because something isn't working for families. Um, and I know they're hardly talented at trying to resolve those. So I think we have. It can be overwhelming when you think about the work that's in front of us, to keep up the modern society, you know, heaps of things. Cause they're not designed to go very fast.
And I I do need to say that when I met with myself about the MCAS, where it's not fun to present this year's scores. Following last year's and it it can be a culture killer for teachers and it's really hard for them to see those scores. Um, we have the conversation of like, you know, like you guys are working too hard to have these scores like year after year after year. So like something needs to shift and sort of that whack a mole with, all right, folks, I'm going to pad that came up. But now this is an issue the next year, and then this is the next issue. So it's like, what can we do just from our general instructional standpoint, our curriculum fidelity, our instructional practices, our time on learning? Like how we're using every minute of the day? How can we change those things to improve the student outcomes? So that like, at least they're feeling like that their effort that they're putting in is having a global impact rather than just these spot.
You probably, you probably would never hear it come then, but the uh the job of a teacher over the past. Ten, fifteen, twenty years, I couldn't even measure how much more difficult it is. Only measurement I could say was, I know what I expected when I asked of teachers fifteen years ago compared to today. And it is like, you know, it's just, it's a, it's a different game, you know, it's a different game when we look at that graph of the high needs. And the number of high need students increasing like that, it it's just, it's, it's a, it's, it's harder. Um, and it's reflected in the, in the pool when we post for jobs. We don't have five hundred people applying for the jobs anymore. I mean, when I talk to. You know, my son, who's a, he's a freshman college, and my daughter, who's a junior in high school, and you talk to them, you know, friends about what they want to. What they want to major in in high school, I mean, sorry, in college. I think I know one or two kids who wants to get into into teaching. Um, so it's important to take care of the people that we have that that go so hard. They do, they really do a good job. It's not the same.
It it's not. And one thing that came up when we were looking at the data today, Heather, I talked a little bit about. I think we take the safety vulnerable response for granted. Um, but if you watch the news this week, one morning I was driving home, if you can't take that for granted, because. They're not, I think there's that background voice that schools aren't one hundred percent safe anymore. And, you know, hopefully it will never happen to us, but it could happen anywhere. So. Just that level of stress on faculty that, you you know, we have to be prepared for those things. And that's part of our our daily routine and our, you know, ongoing preparedness is that. Creating a physically safe environment for intruders is is part of their work. You know, when you think about how the work's changing fifteen to twenty years, I mean, that's just, it is very, very difficult. So I that I don't take those, I don't take the fact that kids and families still sit here, like.
Thank you, everybody. Um. Thank you for being direct about all of our amazing successes and also about our areas for growth. I think that um it's really difficult to do that. I've had conversations with Heather in the past about how. We're such a small district and sometimes when we talk about areas for growth, we're really talking about one, two, three, four people. Um, which is really uncomfortable to do. But I think it's so important, like Kim was saying, to acknowledge that. Growth isn't a weakness, right? The fact that we're all trying to grow and. Even just keep up at this point, um shouldn't be viewed as a, as a negative thing. Um, I had a couple of higher level questions, so they're probably all for you, Heather. So.
All right. Talk a lot, let's go.
We'll start with the easy one. Is our attendance back to pre-COVID level?
No.
How far behind are we?
I don't have that difference yet, but I can find out.
Do you have like a sense of whether it's we moved or whether you're like, oh, we're almost there?
I don't.
Okay.
Because uh thinking about across measures too, right, is like, what's our, you can look at like average attendance rate. You can look at how many students are chronically absent. You can look at, you know, so like there's different buckets, so I'm not really sure, but I'm happy to look into that. Yes, yeah.
Um. And then again, my picture, how? Do we balance um these focus efforts to target specific skill areas? As identified through these grade level tests versus remediating a cohort. An entire cohort of students who we know has now moved on to the next grade with maybe only thirty. A score of this GP of thirty or something. So we know that they didn't fully absorb the tier one instruction with grade of four. As opposed to um. Individual interventions, because we're looking at a whole cohort of students now. How are we going back and catching up? These goals.
That's a great question. Um, and actually, I think um some of the work that you heard our principals talking about is one of the ways that we do it. So I'm thinking specifically about like the middle school and the work that they're doing and looking at. MCAS data and our ready data in the who's in front of us, what are their needs? And if you're looking at, wow, more than twenty percent of these kids need it, that's a really big group. That's not something you want to say. We're gonna, everyone if you get some intervention, like Oprah, right? Like you, if the whole group needs it. As a teacher, I need to think about, okay, in this unit, that's a foundational skill they would need for that. That wasn't fully mastered by this group. I need to plan, how am I going to provide that addition? Instruction, skill development, assessing to make sure we're there as we're entering in this unit. And so sometimes it's this idea, it's a lot of the work that came out post-COVID around the state of accelerating, not remediating. Cause if you go back to teach what they miss, you'll just never, you could just, you'll just stay years behind. So finding those spots where this prior skill we know was not fully mastered by more, you know, this percentage of the kids in my room. I, as a class teacher, know my kids, know my data, I'm planning. Is that pulling a small group to do that direct instruction? Am I providing that assessment to see how they grow in maturity and get it? Or am I really intentionally planning an additional instructional block to fill that gap? So it's a little bit of a party and right, depending on what skill we're looking at, where we are in the year and and, you know, what numbers of kids we're talking about. But you're right, you cannot intervene when the skill is a more global need, um which is why that like. The three times a year, ready data is is important to help us with more of those big picture ideas than maybe an MCAS, which can give us a big. Universal picture, but doesn't necessarily give us that timely routine. So.
So do our teachers have time or? When do our teachers have time to dig into that data and say, oh, gosh, forty percent of my class couldn't explain their. Amount amount of thinking and writing.
So there's not enough, right? There just isn't, right? And I want to acknowledge again, our leaders who are working really, really hard to make it happen. So some of the leaders at this table have been. Meeting the subs in the classrooms to make sure instruction to free up the teachers to go meet with each other to do this data-driven collaborative planning. Or they're providing that release time so that, cause even if you have a dedicated meeting time, having forty minutes. Within which you have to return an email, a phone call, P, meet lunch, and then B, it's just, it's not realistic, right? So our leaders are really being intentional about making sure that when we're doing this, it's a priority, it's a need. So they're giving them that time. Um, the recent preschool professional development day they have on Friday, instead of uh conferences. They spend time in their departments doing some really specific department work. So the leaders are making sure that they're building in time. Depending on their level, their need, their focus, to make, give the teachers that time to do it. Is it enough? It's not enough. Um, and a lot of it's new stuff we're trying to get our hands around because it's, we're realizing that this work is, is um not just simple. Small tweets, it's it's really big work. So um it's efforts that we're trying to cross. And I think sharing what's working and and, you know, how we can, how we can improve this and and where the spaces can be is something that we're trying as a, as a district to do that. I don't know, did I, his representatives?
Take it back and say, I think an area for growth exists there though as well, which is. How do we effectively use the time and how do we define the use of time, whether it's? Team collaboration and working together to solve problems or um individual time to prepare for us. So I do think there is never enough time, but I think we have work to do in defining. The time that we have and the purpose of some of the time so that it can be used more effectively, kind of like the. The proactive versus the dead.
The last one, John, you're not going to like this one. When we brought the instructional coach, believe me, I want coaching residency. When we brought the instructional coaches on. We were going to distribute them across the district based on need. How does this data impact how we are using our instructional coaches?
I I don't have the answer for that. I did not receive that memo. Um, I thought they were, I must have been so upset, I thought they were, I mean, I think in the budget they're pointing. That's.
Well, they're just in our budget, they're just one point out.
Yeah, like in our staffing budget.
Yeah, so I think it's a, it's a really good question, and it is something that um. The amount of meetings that, you know, especially after we did get the data released, we're like, what does this mean for us? At Essex specifically, and the amount of iterations, I was like, how can we start to approach it? Um, I think one of the, one of the pieces we're thinking about is what is the right level of support at the right time for the person we need it? And we're thinking about it both for students, but then also for our staff. Um, because when you think about that support of instructional coaches, it takes time to need to review data, to make action plans. It takes time to co-plan, it takes time to model, it takes time to debrief, it takes to process. So there's a bit of that, making sure that focused support is in the places it needs to be, while also. Here from. Doing the teaching and the work with students, so making sure that there is an appropriate amount of intervention support. And that partnership that the principals are having with the coaches as well, so that. When they were doing their MCAS reviews, they were spending a lot of time with the coaches to be thinking of what are those areas of need to that? When they are then in classrooms and supporting teachers and doing the feedback and observations, that it's directly tied to it. So there's a bit of the targeted intentionality. Um, you know, I think.
I'm happy to take, I can add on. So the original intent is that their district-wide coaches should be distributed based on need. Their point five, point five is a budget distribution, because we cannot tag them to the district line. We have to tie them to the district line item. But I would envision as we move through this process, it would be my expectation that similarly with, as with students, you identified. The global needs, but then those most in need, and then they go to address that. So it could be five people at. Memorial one year and two people at Essex. It could be to be five people at Essex one year or two people at Memorial. But I think we shouldn't get locked into time. Distribution as a point five, point five, but look at it more as a a continuously fluid process of addressing needs as they arise. So I I would just be very careful to lock into a, a distribution on budget. Um, versus how we should be directing our time. And they're under the co-direction of all three entities. But the primary direction of great outcomes.
Um, did you? I did, I did. So um I had a conversation with Dawn over the summer as we were sort of figuring out the, the coaching. Reason what that would look like and and um the residencies in both of our buildings look different. So in his building, like the coaches are are working primarily with like one to two grade levels, and they're focusing on that entire grade level or two for that entire week that they're there. And they're doing the meetings, and then they're following up that nine weeks, nine weeks later. Um, at Essex, a little bit different, it's a little bit more fluid. So the coaches are working with every single grade level while they're there. So they're touching base with fifth grade, fourth grade, third grade, second grade, like they're touching base with all of the grade levels throughout the week that they're there. But make sure that there's that constant um checking in. Figuring out there's problem solving to do, freaking to do on the goals or modeling as well. So it's a little bit more of that consistent feedback and coaching um happening at Essex. There's not sort of. Long line kind of being interaction with the coaches.
Do you feel like um? They are sort of woven into the school culture now. I know when I was a classroom teacher, right? It can be difficult to have somebody come into your room and tell you what you need to do differently, especially if you've been there for a long time. Um, and I know that it can take some time to. Grow as a team. Uh, how would you say that processes going?
I would say it's um leaves and bounds from when we first started it. So I think um was last year, first year. Last year or first year, yeah. And last year was sort of a slower rollout. It was more like opt-in. Um, and sort of choose your own adventure um with the coaching, because of the best way I can put it. A lot of my teachers leaned into it. Um, I think some of the structures that they've put in place this year, the MCAS data meetings. Like really helped with the, with the goal setting. Um, and even the younger grades, where we do have MCAS data meetings, which is, I'd make sure to. Face and then ask like, what's one thing you want to work on for like this trimester or this year? Um, I'm really following through on that. So I think there's been a lot more buy-in and forebuilding. Um, between the coaches and the teachers.
Yeah, the other thing I was gonna say is coaching is different than than intervention. So you can get more intervention. And in theory, they'll grow more, but there's a certain amount of coaching that you can receive and you kind of can't. You don't have room for more, if that makes sense, you know, so if I had. Two full-time coaches, it it would be too much, you know what I mean? Because it's, it's hard to find the time. Yeah, well, it's, it's hard to find the time for them to do the coaching with the teachers because the teacher and the teacher.
Right.
You know, so um with the model that we have now, we are providing um release time so that the coaches can work with the teachers. So anyways, the data can come up with, you know, come up with the goals and that sort of thing. And then they're, they're. They're modeling and doing some embedded PD, but I don't think the teachers want them in their classroom all day, every day. So there is like a. There's kind of like a. Yeah, there's like, you can put so many scoops on the phone, then it's like, this is, this is too much. Um, so like one or two measurable goals. Um, so I mean, if that, if that makes.
While simultaneously, they're leading professional development across grade levels and teams and within special staff meetings. And yes, and partnering with our interventionist team and our specialists. And so there's also a lot of and um.
But I encourage to continue to look at it though as tiers of, it's tiers of coaching, just like we have tiers of intervention. Because there may be a need for some staff to have level two or level three.
Sure.
Um, attention from a coach, where it's not just putting scoops on to enhance, but it might be to get in and to remediate some identified concerns.
And then there's something as well that was built in this year is that to launch the year, anyone who's new to the district or new grade level have really. Uh, intentional target support to launch that year to start as well. So that was also a, a piece that was scheduled.
So last one, our, our coaches, um only at our elementary schools?
Only at our elementary schools, one K five math, one K five literacy coach. Shared.
Very well, I always wish, but thank you all for coming here tonight. We do all really appreciate it. I think you know that. Um, and I, I guess just a, I don't really have any questions, just a little bit of feedback. Um, you know, I always think when I see these presentations, and I've seen several of them. Uh, yeah, I'm a big fan of data. You guys are all amazing educators. So uh, you know, my kind of feedback would be, you know, I'm a big fan of data. But it's definitely not the only thing to consider when you're looking at these. You know, questions and maybe thinking about, uh, you know, why we're seeing these data points. I would just caution to make sure that it's, you know, that you're not only focused on the data while you're doing your amazing work. And then the second part is, uh, you know, I think I've said this a few times. Please do continue to let us know, you know, through Pam. Uh, you know, there, there weren't any specific asks in this presentation sort of of us or what you might need. Um, to maybe make some of these improvements. So whenever those do come up, like, please know that. I think we all want those to be followed up to our level. And if you see something or identify, you know, different, whatever it may be. I would just make sure that you all know that we are here to absolutely support you. Uh, nation, our amazing teachers, uh, all of our staff, right? And so we want to understand those things so you can, you know.
Even when they're really long shots or like, you know, that we're never going to be able to afford it, it's important that we know that it's needed and that we can't afford it.
So I know this, I know this happened. So I know this, I know this happens, right? Like every year we're making, you know, improvements and things like that. But again, I just want to make sure that you guys all, please do bring those things to us. Don't think that any idea or, you know, change or new resource, uh, you know, should always be brought up, so that we, you know, understand what those means. And thanks, I really appreciate it.
Do you think?
Maybe principals.
We have thoughts about that, in one form or another, for a few months now, so I'll just offer that for a motion.
I sent a, a label name. Yep, I didn't get it in time, so I'm pretty frightened to know. I'm trying to just say that, then there were two, like, I edit my face. It's really conceptual, yeah, except, I mean, you can always edit it or tune some things if you want to.
I vote to approve the district improvement plan as per second.
What was the party?
No, just.
I moved, did I say vote and move?
Uh, any discussion?
Yes. Um, Cam, I know that you had also received the email from Omeba. I'm just wondering if you could quickly speak to um the necessity of not in, or not, if you could speak to the choice to not have the, um, performing arts score in the year on the.
I think we went back to progress reports on the previous district. Moved that off with the hope that we could solve it through reorganization of stipends, which we're currently working on, very slow root pressure. Um, I also don't think it's a, it's not responsible at this point in time, given what we are, so we have to solve, I think we have to solve.
So it's not, as it, it's, it's not um off the table, but it is off the table of hiring as at one point as oh, it's okay, yes, but it is still, you are still, still.
I have one discussion point to say openly, love the first two pages that add on. That, that's good, that's huge. It makes it really accessible, easy to understand, and I feel like someone could take this, read those two and then be like, okay, I'm probably, like, which is what a parent might do, but they can at least understand and see, may. But they can see and understand what this is without getting into the jargon, being confused and secret with all, so thank you for doing those. That's what's awesome.
I move the question.
The question we have to vote on moving the question, just let us say, take a vote.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Steve Adams, just.
Yes, yes, sort of. It's a majority.
It's fine.
It's fine.
But it's actual much, it was, that's it, right? Then just the calendar, the budget calendar, which is something that happened.
So you've waited so long. How do you wanna do budget? Do you wanna do a presentation of all of the lines, or do you wanna do it as it's presented to you, you can see it all Q and A?
Mm-hmm. I like that, because I, I feel like the um, the kind of executive summaries that you've sent help us understand where things are, and be readily available, so.
You have no questions, just ask me if I need to.
I'm gonna give the two-minute overview of everything.
Yes, that's.
I'm just, mostly for the public, and you guys obviously have this, this will be posted on the agenda, I haven't got that far. Um, so you actually have the budget actual for the quarter just ended, as well as the fiscal year twenty five in your packets. So I will start with fiscal year twenty five, two-second overview. Um, we spent ninety-nine percent of our operating budget. Um, our personnel costs were higher than budgeted by forty-two thousand. And the most significant shortfall was in the area of teaching assistance. We discussed that during the FY twenty-six budget process, that we weren't adding teaching assistants necessarily, but we were moving them from the pre-K revolving account to the operating budget. Uh, we no longer had surplus in the preschool revolving account to support the staff that we were charging. Um, our expense side, we had a surplus or our costs were less than budgeted by a hundred and ten thousand. Net those two figures, um, basically we had sixty-eight thousand in turnbacks um of a thirty-two million dollar budget. So, very tight. Um, did want to mention, we had two hundred and forty-one thousand in encumbrances or carryovers of that two hundred and forty-one thousand. A hundred and fifty thousand was the supplemental appropriation to OPAP that you guys reported in August, it was July, August. Um, we did a tracking with the fiscal year end, and we made out sure in July. So um, just wanted to mention that the sixty-eight thousand goes into our E and D calculation for FY twenty five. Another report there is our actual revenue reports. Basically, our revenues were two hundred and ten thousand over budget. Um, that is primarily comprised of eighty-one thousand in chapter seventy money and a hundred and thirty thousand in um interest earnings. So the two hundred and ten thousand plus the sixty-eight thousand really is what's replenishing our share last year. I just want to remind you, we only used six hundred for the FY twenty-six budget. We had a budget of our balance of one point three million in E and D, so that brought it down to the seven hundred thousand dollar range, we're going to replenish it with approximately three hundred thousand. So our E and D is projected to be the start of the new office. And that'll be submitted to the O R A in weeks, as soon as I can get a tentative budget done, I expect to get off with it. Um, so I'll move on to the current quarter. We're on track, but the budgets continue to get tighter and tighter. As we're squeezing these lines, we're squeezing our health insurance lines, we're squeezing our revenue lines to be more in line with where we think they are, it's going to lead to less E and D, less reserves. Um, you're gonna see that trajectory going forward. Um, great that we can budget a little bit tighter, it doesn't give us more flexibility necessarily. The fact that we proposed the new sixty-eight thousand is not where I really wanted to be, especially considering we did not pay any special intuitions this year. Um, we did build up our circuit breaker fund a little bit more than in past years, but we were not a. Um, so that's in a nutshell, I did wanna just mention that I also included um an additional sheet that had most revolving funds, doesn't have every single revolving fund, but the majority is the ones we rarely use on an operational basis. We have small ones that I explained today, the finance subcommittee, I'm still identifying where these one and two thousand dollar funds are. Um, once I figure those out, those will show up there as well, or we'll, we'll consolidate them with the other funds we have. The primary revolving funds are. Going forward with that, and then the revenues I'll report on an annual basis, because some of our revenues are monthly, some of them are quarterly, and some of them are due, so. That's about it, in a nutshell, things are tight, they're going forward, we'll continue reporting quarterly. If there are any specific questions, you can bring them up or reach out to us.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks. I will.
Point two percent. Fifty thousand, I'm thirty-two million dollars. This way, point two percent, it's too tight, it is too tight.
That's what I was gonna say.
Right? Where we are, but thank you. And we did not do any year-end massive spending with capital projects or needs like that, we did not.
Yeah.
Yeah, it wasn't a spend-down.
Right, it wasn't a spend-down, except, yeah.
Exactly.
One thing that didn't, the finance subcommittee, and we two not have the debate now, but think about it for next time, is how this concept of trying to report on one sheet in our budget, all of the different things that comprise our finances.
It creates a lot of gifts.
So things that are outside the operational, but are still things that we manage, but some are not, some are a custodial of and have to oversee, some are separate budgets. So some of the grants have specific budgets with the granting authority, and it's just completely separate from us, even though it's supporting some of our work. So we can go either way on it, it's a lot of manual reporting still and pulling things together, but there's this, I think, interest in showing a snapshot of all of the different pieces and how they go together. So we're just, I think we're looking for some consensus from the group on how we, what you're looking for. Before we build, try to build something, thinking it's gonna answer the question, but it may not be.
Right, because the question came up today when I showed the revolving funds, well, where are all the grants? Well, most of the grants are actually in deficit because most of them are reimbursement grants, so. Um, I can certainly show those, but it's gonna lead to a lot of questions.
What's the problem we're trying to solve? I think, how do you see the full scope of the budget and all of the tools available to us? And I think what we're trying to explain, but maybe not successfully, is some of them aren't really tools that are available to us. Um, because even though we get an IDEA grant, the IDEA grant can't go to offset something else in the budget as express purposes.
Yeah.
So there's value in knowing that there is a, is a resource. Um, so it is.
Trying to figure out, I have an opinion.
Yeah, I know, yeah, so that's, it's not meant for like full discussion right now. Help us work through what, how it can be an effective tool if we're going to put energy into building it.
Well, thank you. And as far as the calendar, it sounds just.
We'll call it informational, I think it's in line with all the previous years. And the only outstanding question we have is the actual date of certification of apportionment. Uh, we'll see, and I think for November eighteenth, I think we've been asked to try to keep this as possible to the timeline this year. But the reality is, we won't know full healthcare numbers till the end, so how do you want, how do you want it? We have some job.
But it is something to tell. It's, so, so just a little additional context for you members, uh, you know, when it comes to healthcare, since there is uncertainties in that, so later on, basically sort of very in the budget process. Um, you know, for the past few years, at least, we've done, if we, you know, the goal is to continually get that number down. As that number comes down, we directly pass in those savings in our budget directly to the budget that we present versus, you know, submitting an earlier budget at a higher number. And then if our healthcare comes in lower, directly that's in the same. So, you know, it, it's really, that, that money would end up coming back in E and D anyways, but it's still, it's just a different way to approach ourselves to someone that we need to consider, valuable to do that, valuable to communicate. It, it's really the question. Okay, so, all right.
Did I hear correctly the word, and we're anticipating that actually a twenty percent increase?
That's what Maya, that, that group insurance agency has told their clients to anticipate and use as a budgeting template to start.
Usually they're on the lower end.
So we'll see. And the only other thing to share is that on next Thursday, we're gonna hear from a couple of your, like, brokers. We, insurance brokers, we go over question proposals, um, we received three proposals, and we're meeting with those three firms. Uh, yeah, cool. And you'd like to change on like our bad broker or anything in your book? But that will be starting right when? Oh, you, you, what did you, you did the figure, um, we're on reserve level is now the percentage. If we come in at the million dollars, um, that I'm estimating, I'm estimating just over a million dollars, our reserves as a percentage of budget would be five point six seven percent. Where last year it was eight point four two. Spending down the E and D, applying it to the budget as well as spending some things out of stabilization, including these at least.
And as I compared to past years, obviously last year, we're saying much less, but a year before that, we're.
As early to have a stabilization fund from many years prior.
Or, but like the reserves as a percentage?
I have a historical chart, I need to put it just off.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be extensive, we used, I was curious.
To target ten percent.
Yeah, my impression is five percent is not a lot.
Not a lot.
Um, and we're going into federal.
Just to eight. Uh, through their process of reserve policy development, and then.
We're letting it bring you.
Just to prove that.
Yeah, good idea.
At the last, yeah.
You know, I think if women back, if you piece together all of the budget presentations where we're starting to ring the bell, this is what the projection holds, so.
Hold on.
Okay, we will move on to some of the other topics.
I feel so long ready to follow you. Um, Nadia, we approved the, yeah, and I, I would have approved too.
You have, you don't, well, share any comments to.
I, I agree. Thank you, I appreciate that. My comment is really, I know you mentioned it in your work. Just wanted to say thank you for sending out that email about the, the meals and the community resources. I thought it was really um sensitive and, and valuable, and um the tone was just right, the timing was just right with everything going on in the world, but also we're headed into things, and, and things are um tight for people, and I just really appreciated that you did that, and just wanted to say thank you.
It's not a lot of people, yeah.
Especially having a holiday season, and so I think it was really nice to see that coming, you know, leading up from the top.
And there are a lot of efforts and outreach from the community, you get the school, you know, back and forth to make sure we know who and what, and share resources.
I, I know for a fact, in Essex, we have, we have um documented issues with people who don't want to ask for help, and I'm sure it's not just there. Um, and the school is the first line of defense, because you see it, and so that's like the easiest way to identify. And I know that, that the schools have, um, have been that proactive um, safety net for kids, and it stands from there too. So anyway, just, I thought that was really well timed and much appreciated.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you, Earl.